Good evening, councilors. Apologies for the delay. It is 6:31, so I will call the Tuesday, June 17th, meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ladeen.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Vice President Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
President Graski.
We have a quorum.
Item 3.1 is a public hearing to consider nonrenewal of applicants in Part II of the 2025 to 26 Alcohol Report. The one hearing is for Cameo Investments II LLC. Trade name Centerfold's Cabaret located at 702 Tower Avenue. Their outstanding and non-compliance items now include just one thing, which is noncompliance with City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Alcohol, Section 1480, Non-Operation. They have since been approved by the Fire Department and paid their outstanding license fees.
Okay, so councilors, if there's no objection, in a moment I will open the public hearing, but I want to brief you on how this is going to go because this should be new for most of you. I'm going to have quite a bit of help from the clerk who has led this process and the attorney who will walk us through this hearing. I will open the public hearing, and then I will ask the clerk to explain at a bit more length in her own words, how we got to this point and why the city ultimately recommends nonrenewal, at least today. Then I will, before I proceed to questions or discussion among the council, I will ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak in the public hearing. If the licensee or a representative, an official representative of the applicant is here, we may subject that person to questions, but I'll see if anybody else wants to speak in the public hearing. Then I will close the public hearing and we will proceed to discussion. We'll do a question and answer, and I think we'll just entertain some discussion here before we decide if a motion is in order. Could get a little complex along the way. Feel free to, please remember, point of information is if you have a question about process, namely the question at hand, can I do this, can I do that? Point of orders, if we get out of line, everything else, just wait your turn and we'll call on you, okay? So if there is no, any questions about that process right now? Okay, then if there is no objection, I will open the public hearing. Does anybody, first of all, is the licensee or representative here to speak on behalf of Cameo Investments LLC, namely Centerfold's Cabaret? Please approach the podium here. And I'm sorry, I've already, I'm gonna let this person speak first. Please say your name.
Rodrick Petticoat.
And in the public hearing, you have three minutes, although we may keep you here for questions.
Sure.
So please speak for up to three minutes. I'll give you a 30-second warning.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll actually hit our 150 hours prior to the expiration of the current license term.
Okay, anything to add?
We have a plan in place for it. We're already at over 50, and I figured you guys could just figure out a way to press to verify it at the end of the month.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in the public hearing? Is there anybody else that would like to speak in the public hearing? Would anybody else like to speak to the nonrenewal of the Cameo Investments license to operate Centerfold's Cabaret? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain questions or discussion by the council. But first, did you have anything else to say about the application or the process?
I'm not sure, let me explain this ordinance a little further.
Yes, please.
Hey, everyone, I'm gonna explain a little bit more about why there was this recommendation for us to review. Section 80 of Chapter 14 advises that no Class B license for alcohol beverages can be, shall be renewed unless the license premises has been legally opened to the public for the sale of the licensed beverages for at least 150 hours during the six months immediately prior to the license's expiration date. I had known that this business had been closed for some time. Asked how many hours they had been open so far this calendar year, and they told me verbally they were open for about 20 hours. And so that's why I recommended we review before approving the license.
I've learned about most of this fairly recently. I've followed the clerk's work. I think she's done an outstanding job. A lot of this follows an instruction that I gave to the clerk about this time last year. Those of you that have been around for a while will remember, we generally set one of these public hearings every single year for a few applicants that do not have all their paperwork together until literally the day of the council meeting. They usually bring it in that day, and then we decide, and then we waive the public hearing. I asked the clerk to deliver some pretty clear warnings to the tavern operators that we're unlikely to tolerate that in the future. These licenses carry a very high degree of responsibility, and we expect people to have their applications in on time, all of their work together, so that we can renew with confidence that they have met all of the requirements. She has done an outstanding job of that this year. You've seen the same operators year over year over year fail to meet the deadlines. They've all met them now, and so I just want to compliment them and her for that work. Ultimately, this feels like a technicality, but this is a business that has really not been open for months. They, as you heard from the applicant, he does not qualify for renewal at this moment. He has not been open for 150 hours in the subsequent time period. That may be true at our next city council meeting, but I believe that that is up to the applicant to decide. So I have been convinced by the clerk and her work that this is not eligible for renewal tonight. So we will answer as many questions as possible. Again, I think I'm gonna have to defer to the clerk and the attorney on most questions. I'm about as up to date on this as you are, except for our process over the years. So then, once questions are exhausted, I will ask if anybody would like to make a motion to renew the license tonight. If it is not renewed tonight, the applicant is free to apply before the next council meeting. Other questions? Counselor Moffett?
How long does the current license stay active? Like, if they, if we take no action this evening, when does the current one expire?
At the end of June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Reading between the lines of your question, I don't know if this is why you were asking, the next council meeting would be July 1st, the next day. Counselor Elm?
I think you were picking up what I was thinking, but if it's not renewed tonight, they would apply for a whole new license for July 1st, is that right? Or would that still be a renewal?
Do you know the answer to that?
No, I don't.
How about you?
If it's not renewed tonight, of course, the renewal would be for July 1st.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the difference between renewing for July 1st or nonrenewing tonight, and then perhaps the former licensee would be in position to apply for a new license sometime on or after July 1st, when the new license period starts.
What is the?
Did I botch that?
I'd have to probably call Department of Revenue to ask them if we would be reconsidering the renewal for July 1st date. Or if we don't renew tonight. Or if we don't renew tonight, if we would be considering the new application July 1st.
What is the?
There's no rule that I've seen that you have to renew before the July 1st date.
Gotcha.
What is the, in the event that a new license, they'd have to apply for a new license, what is the difference in the process?
For the applicant, there wouldn't be one. It would be the same application forms, the same background checks, the same Fire Department review. We would be presenting it as a new license to council and their, for their consideration. But for the applicant, there would be no change.
And there's no fee difference either for renewal or new applicant?
No, there would not be a change, same.
So it's almost irrelevant then, in terms of renewal or new application?
I, it's an old conversation, so you'll have to see if you still agree, but I've come to believe that there's a difference in the amount of discretion afforded to the council. I think you have a lot of discretion with nonrenewal, but even more with whether to issue a new license. In this case, I'm inclined to agree with what you're saying, that it just, there seems to be no difference, but I think you could use almost any reason at all that isn't arbitrary and capricious to choose not to issue a new license. But if that's a difference, it's the only one.
I think the business had a whole year to get these hours in, and putting this up for consideration on July 1st seems to be a logical next step to me. Perhaps they're only down for a day at that point, right? Is that, is that the impact, assuming the council approves it, but can't guarantee that.
They would have to be closed until 6:30 PM, or the conclusion of the meeting, I suppose.
Well, what, you know, one thing you could consider, I suppose, is renewing the license conditioned on Mr. Petticoat's ability to demonstrate by July 1st that he has been open and operating and selling alcoholic beverages for at least 150 hours in the six months prior to the expiration of the license period, which would be June 30th. That way, you could, you know, we could, we could hold him to demonstrating to us however, I don't know how he's going to do that, but you could, we could hold him to demonstrating to us staff that he has fulfilled those hours open requirements in the next 13 days. And then we would come to you, I suppose, on July 1st and advise you as to whether or not there is satisfaction of that requirement within the code.
And we've done that before, an approval with a contingency with this?
We've done approvals with contingencies. I don't remember having done one with hours of operation.
Sure.
And I hope, I hope Mr. Petticoat's listening to all this, and regardless how this goes, if he gets to have a license with us in the future, I hope he's filing this away and remembering to tend to these details long before June 17th or 18th next year. But that's really none of my affair. I'm just trying to coach you up on maybe what we can do to acknowledge the existing life in the current alcohol license period and hold his feet to the fire on putting together those remaining hours of operation that he has to satisfy under the code.
Historically, when we've done conditional licenses, it's been for something that's very easy to establish. Like, did they get, did the police chief sign off on it? Did they get this form in on time? If he's got a, and this is your choice, counsel, but if he's got to demonstrate via evidence, convince us of a fact, like he has or has not been opened, you issue the license. I'd much rather he demonstrate that to you than me, and then you just take my word for it, or not.
I fear if we go down this path, the problem that you were talking about, how we resolved for the late applicants in the past years, that this just could start over again, and we get late applicants because we'll approve it on a contingency. So that'd be just a concern, but those are my only questions, thank you.
Counselor Sweeney?
Take me through the process. First of all, how did we discover that he wasn't? And then what process did we, when we found that out and verified it, did we notify him in writing or call? What's, take me through the process, when you, when you first found out that he wasn't being open less than very many hours, so.
I believe it was early 2024, during renewal period last year. That I heard that Centerfold was not in operation, but had been previous to early spring 2024, and I'm just remembering here. We renewed them for July 1st last year, and I never heard about them reopening. They actually didn't get their license for a couple of months after July 1st because they had not yet paid their renewal fees. And so they'd been missing a license after July 1st, and it was strange not to have somebody barking down my door to get their license right away because they weren't in operation. And then earlier this spring, when we sent out renewal paperwork, which is at the end of February, I got letters back because I had sent it to the superior address, and they had been closed and had to send it to the owner's hometown. And then just in discussion with them about their application and some paperwork they were missing, I raised the question of how many hours they had been open so far this year, and they had not yet been open at that point, so.
I realize that's the owner's responsibility, but there's no question that he knew, knew that he had, you had conversation of some sort with him for.
I don't know when that conversation started, when I pulled up the ordinance itself and pointed it out to them, but it was several weeks ago.
Thank you.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I don't know if we know, but was there a reason why the business hadn't been running as a regular business?
I don't know that information.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Counselor Graski?
Oh, I thought maybe Fennessy was up. Okay, you know, I'm trying to, I mean, the one thing that I can't understand is how we can, were we just taking word of mouth on the amount of hours that this business has been open? I mean, that just seems as if, it just seems like a very wide open door, and that's, I mean, if I'm, I was doing some research and putting things together, and if there was, you know, this specific business announced today that they had been reopened, and their hours are posted, and technically adding in hours, and that hence they only meet 140. It's like, how do we decide that they have been fulfilling these hours? I don't know if that's a state situation. I mean, I feel bad for the whole situation because it's like, I just don't know how to calibrate, or, sorry, you know what I'm trying to say, as far as how do we determine what's in front of us on this, on why? Especially with hours, how do we determine that?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be state because this is actually a city requirement. It's an ordinance, and so that's, that's why I feel like it should be in front of you. It's almost like a jury where you determine the standard of evidence, you know, and it's very, I think it's very clearly, since we can't prove a negative, we can't prove that they haven't met it. It's, the burden is on the owner seeking the license. Keep in mind, these are not things that we hand out, as I'm sure you know, we don't hand these out to just anybody. We expect a demonstration of responsibility. So what you would do is, and in fact, the statutory language generally requires the licensee to come to the council and give cause why they should be renewed. And so the statutory language puts the burden on him. Then in terms of how we determine, it's whether or not you are satisfied. Do you, do you, in casting your vote, believe him? So that's why it's important to me that you see the evidence and then make an informed choice.
Yeah, to me, I would have, you know, daily reports, hours of operation, you know, pay stubs, invoices, something along those lines, that, what was that? Oh, yeah, I mean, even a credit card transaction slip that proved, I don't care if it was a $5 transaction every single day. To me, what I have found online, their hours of operation are every day from 4:00 to 2:00 AM. They reopened, announced a reopening today. If they're, if they can't be open on, you know, 12:01 on July 1st, that then cuts them to about 138 hours, so that does not fulfill what is in front of us. And just to clarify, they still haven't paid their $600 outstanding renewal fees here?
They have paid all the fees.
Okay, and Fire Department status?
Fire Department did approve them.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking something up. Counselor Fennessy, I'm gonna give you the floor right now, but I am gonna come back and further answer Counselor Graski's question because I want to give her the statutory language. Counselor Fennessy, please.
You can go ahead and finish that if it's on the, might make more sense to finish that conversation.
If you can bear with me, do you remember the chapter? I've got 125, 4. 12, okay, yeah. I'll have this fairly quickly, sub 2, okay. So here's the language for the procedure on hearing. Let's see, oh, I'm sorry, for the summons. Where's the, shall give, let's see, I'm just gonna start reading and see if I stumble on it. Upon the filing of the complaint, the municipal governing body or duly authorized committee shall send a summons. We've done that. Someone shall command the licensee complaint to appear before the municipal governing body on the command of their name, not less than three days, and show cause why his or her license should not be revoked or suspended. So what the statute says, commands of the licensee is you must convince the council. That's the burden, whether or not you are convinced. He must show cause why this license, and this is revocation language, so it definitely, and later the statute says this applies to nonrenewals as well. It's, the burden is on the licensee to convince each of you that he has met the requirements. One of those requirements is a city requirement to be open. So that's, that's the statutory standard, whether or not each of you as an individual has been convinced. So I, you've made a great point about, here's an example, some evidence I, Counselor Graski, would like to see to convince me. Counselor Fennessy may have a different standard, but you would, as each of, he's got to convince six of you to give him his license. That's what the statute commands.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I mean, and I'm not saying you have to have a point-of-sale system or any of that, but I, I hope that whatever I have found today by doing research that I don't find that there is the 150 hours that will be fulfilled that I can find. I mean, you can say 20, but I'm just not seeing that, so thank you.
Okay, now Counselor Fennessy, please.
Thank you. Counselor Graski asked the two questions about the Fire Department reinspection, the outstanding fees that I had to, but it, so it kind of boils down to the 150 hours, and that 150 hours only applies to the renewal, correct?
Well, the 150 hours of operation in the last six months of the license period is a requirement in our local code.
For renewal, though, not, obviously not for new license.
Right, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a blanket requirement for anyone in the city who has a liquor license. I think the policy behind that, almost certainly, is we don't like our businesses to go fallow. We like businesses to be lit and not dark, and serving people, and not shuttered. And so to have a vibrant entertainment district, or any sort of district for that matter, you expect your licensees who have the privilege of selling alcoholic license, alcoholic beverages, to be open some, and that some to us is at least 150 hours in the six months leading up to the expiration of their current license period. So if you wanted to, we could bring you back to the microphone, we could put him under oath, and we could start to put some of the questions to the owner that you're, that we're sort of being, that we're putting to ourselves. And if it's a competence that you're looking for, that he is going to be open as many hours as he says he's going to be, or this isn't, we're not gonna lock into a pattern for years to come, those are all, I think they're all legitimate questions, and we, it's a little weird to have open up questions to 10 potential askers. Maybe you want me to start out, if you, if you want to do that. But, yeah, the ordinance that Clerk Blunt cited in that notice that she sent to the owner weeks ago said, you are deficient in the following area. You haven't been open enough in accord with our local code to justify the renewal of the license. Obviously, it's awkward when we're having this conversation, 13 days yet remaining on the current license period, so.
Right, but I don't know if that, if that would be a fruitful effort either because it was, it was stated that he's been open 50 hours, so. But I think at this point, really, the only thing that he could do is convince us that he's gonna hit that 150 before the, before the renewal date. But, you know, if, and I guess where I was going with that 150 hours is if that's, if that's a requirement for the renewal, and this council chooses not to do the renewal, which I think makes a lot of sense, one of the conditions of a renewal is they have to have 150 hours, and these fall in short, so I don't think that there's, you know, the requirements have been met for a renewal. But if we choose not to renew the policy, then the next option is for him to reapply as, as a new applicant, and those hours don't apply, right? So are we, so are we getting hung up on the 150 hours? Are we getting sidetracked by that? Because all it would take is for the license, the current license to fall off, we're not gonna renew it, and then reapplies with a brand-new license, there's no requirement for the 150 days, and we just go forward. I guess the response to that would be, a new license, we would have the opportunity to, you know, to review it and to either approve it or deny it, but that 150 hours wouldn't be a factor for a new license, right?
I think that's correct, and the reason, unless, you know, there's, there's further questions that we can ask and learn about. One of them, Clerk Blunt already articulated, that it's possible you could renew past the deadline. I don't think we have that answer right now in front of us. However, one of the questions that I will ask the attorney between, if this is not renewed tonight, one of the questions I'll ask the attorney between now and the next council meeting is, you know, similar to what I just kind of posited to the council, can we bring in other, other factors beyond this? Do we consider that as a clean slate, not just, should we reopen this? Because if it's a new license, I believe we can look at it as a new license, and then you can consider anything you want. That's the danger to the licensee, a danger that he kind of willingly walked into. So right now, all we're talking about is, does he meet the qualifications for renewal? And, and I think we've all established that he doesn't, but I believe, and I'll seek more legal advice and present that to you, but I believe that when we get into the next meeting, if it's a new application, you can consider just about any reason for approving or not approving. You can decide you want fewer taverns in that neighborhood, you can decide you don't want cabarets of that nature in that neighborhood, you can just look at the past history of it. All of that becomes a factor with a new license. I believe you have more discretion, but I want to be more sure before I truly give that advice.
Sure, and then with, with this establishment, this is the only license that is required, the liquor license, right? There isn't any kind of other?
I think so.
They also carry an amusement device operator license.
Sure.
And an annual cabaret license.
Okay, so just the standard, the standard license is for, you know, really any bar, okay, thank you.
Counselor Moffett?
Yeah, just want to ask a question if this will be operating or is currently, if it's open right now, I guess, operating as an adult-oriented entertainment business? It's classified by Article 7, Division 3, Section 122.
City Code?
Yeah, of the, our planning code has very specific guidelines regarding those businesses. And it says in Section 122-840, acclivity, that provisions of this section apply to all existing businesses and future adult entertainment-oriented businesses. However, any such existing businesses that do not meet the zoning district restrictions or the distance limitations may continue its existence as a non-conforming use, provided, however, that no such business may be enlarged or increased in size or be discontinued for a period of more than 12 months. And so I guess if it's operating in that method, essentially, you know, if we don't really have the information we need tonight to renew a license because they haven't met the guidelines, and I would say this probably needs some further investigation, but I would suggest that if they're applying for a new permit, I'm not sure they meet the requirements in a C4 district to operate an adult-oriented entertainment business.
I would, of course, you're right, I would have to consult with the planning director on that. But it's a pretty significant, if that's true, it's pretty significant for issuing a new license. Counselor Johnson?
I was kind of thinking something similar to that, although I appreciate that information. I have something different to add to that. The new license, or even with our current renewal, if it's possible to do a renewal after July 1st, you know, we're still investigating that. after July 1st, you know, we're still investigating that. Could we, at that point, add in condition, like, conditions to a new licenser, like, above and beyond our ordinances that already exist?
That's a good question. You absolutely can, the council can, and has recently imposed pretty significant conditions, and those are non-negotiable. I've negotiated them before, but when the council imposes it, that's not like the operator agrees or doesn't agree, you impose them, and those are conditions of that unique license.
Okay. So even if, you know, again, I don't, I don't think we've met the standard of 150 hours. I'd have to do some quick math, but 100 hours in two weeks doesn't seem impossible, but it just seems like it could be difficult for him to get to that 100 hours in the next two weeks. I guess I would be more in favor of maybe a non-renewal tonight, and then if they continue to do, to look forward, if they continue to look to, continue that establishment there, that we would maybe look at some additional conditions beyond what our ordinances already are.
Councilor Moffitt, I'll get you to hit your light, please. I'm calling Councilor Grasky next. Councilors, the parliamentarian in me is a little bit uncomfortable going into discussion on the merits right now, seeing as we don't have a motion on the floor, but this is a big enough wrinkle that we should keep that going, but do your best to not make arguments for or against unless and until somebody makes a motion to approve this license. But I'm not gonna shut anybody down. Councilor Grasky, please.
This might not be actually be able to be answered, but I know in the past, I know tavern license, personal tavern licenses don't technically say the establishment anymore, but in the past they have. Is there, do we know if they, if they're, they have licensed bartenders able to perform these hours that have been open and continue, or claiming that they will meet these 150 hours?
Our tavern operator licenses don't require bartenders to report who they work for, it's an option. I don't currently have anyone active right now who's reported that they work at Centerfolds. That doesn't mean, you know, within the two years someone's a bartender, they can move around, so I don't have evidence that they do, I don't have evidence that they don't.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I think it's probably valuable to bring that back, but it's a discussion for the committee. Further questions or discussion? Okay, that, we don't have a question or a motion, so how this will go. I'll put a call out in just a second to see if there is a motion. Any council could make a motion to renew the license, quite very simply, to renew the license. That would require a second, we would take a vote. However, our recommendation right now is non-renewal, because they do not qualify for renewal. If, if you support that, we simply do nothing. If there is no motion, or if a motion fails, the license will not have been renewed. We don't make a motion to non-renew, we don't do negative motions. So in a minute, in 10 seconds, I'm gonna ask, is there a motion to renew the license? If the room is silent, I'll wait a minute, and then we'll move on. If there's a motion, we will proceed. Okay, does everybody understand this? All right, is there a motion to renew the license tonight?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, with no second, there, the motion fails, and the license is not renewed, and we will consider the question if the applicant applies before, in time to reach the July 1st council agenda. No, sir, that would be out of order, this, we are finished with this item of business. Sir, you're out of order. We are going to proceed with the council's business.
Item 4.1 is the approval of the June 3, 2025, regular council meeting minutes.
Motion by Councilor Herrick, second by Councilor Elm, is there discussion? Councilor Moffitt?
Yes, sorry, just a second here. In the minutes, it lists the yays and nays from the conversation about the museums. I'm sorry, I have to just pull it up here. And, sorry.
We're gonna pay, I'm looking at page 6 in the packet, I believe.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanna make a correction. There were a couple of the staff members from the museum that spoke, and they spoke in favor of the change, and not against it, as it's listed in the minutes. That would be Valerie Burke and Bella Olson, I believe, or the, the only employee, current employees that spoke during the public forum, and the public hearing, and they both spoke in favor of the change.
So if you'd like to recommend a change to the minutes, that proceeds as an amendment in the normal fashion, can you suggest?
So I suggest an amendment changing Valerie Burke's from against to in favor, and Bella Olson's from against to in favor.
Is there a second to that motion? The second is, motion by Councilor Moffitt, the second by Councilor Elm, to amend. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Are there further corrections to the minutes? Councilors, I've said this in committee a number of times, minutes can be corrected at any time forever. If you ever find anything incorrect in our minutes from any meeting, ever in time, you can bring it forward to correct. Okay, any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And item 6.1 is a report from Mayor Payne.
Okay, good evening again, councilors. We are going to start moving very fast on the budget, and so you're gonna hear from us probably tomorrow morning for your submissions for budget ideas. And then we're, as early as next week, we're going to be meeting with the staff and the council leadership to, for them to pitch their ideas. The novel thing here is typically that's just me and senior staff, gonna invite the council leadership to that as well, to start representing any ideas you have. I'm working to simplify the form a little bit, that's been a little bit, it's more designed for staff, and some councilors have found that a bit clunky, so I'm gonna, it's really gonna be a very simple suggestion form for things that should be added to the budget. I will, if I need help understanding what you mean, I will reach out to you. Please view this part of the process, a stage of the process, as a brainstorming session. This is what I call the magic wand exercise. If money were no object, you can suggest anything, you can suggest everything. Obviously, these should be things that you truly want to see included in the budget, but this is your chance to be free of responsibility. You don't have to balance anything right now, you don't have to figure out where the money's coming from. The ideas are what we're looking for, because every once, once in a while, we see an idea that's really off-kilter, that's really new, that nobody's ever thought of, that really does gain a lot of popularity with the council, and, and so we will put those things in priority based budgeting. Have fun with this. Submit your ideas to my office, to the council leadership, and then we're gonna chat about them internally, I'll chat about them directly with you, but if you submit an idea, it's almost certainly going into priority-based budgeting for your colleagues to elevate. The, the business I have for you tonight will, we're gonna do this over the next couple of weeks, but I am recommending the creation of the golf course committee, which seems to already exist. As I mentioned at Council Reorg at the committee appointments, we can't find any evidence of when and how we created it, so we're just gonna do that formally, so we have this logged and on the minutes. I'll recommend approving the committee as it's described in that memo, but over the next couple of weeks, several other committees will probably have to rewrite their descriptions to clean up some of those problems we talked about a few weeks ago. However, I'm going to have the committees themselves generate that process, so for example, CIT is probably going to bring an ordinance or resolution forward, that committee should generate that. The only reason I'm doing this like this right now is because I need evidence that it exists, I need it to formally exist, so I can formally make these appointments. Then the golf course committee is absolutely free to make changes, if they wanna suggest a different method of operations. So that's, that's all I have in terms of business, besides the appointments to the golf course committee after we create it. Councilor Grasky?
I just have a question about the memo, if, if, is that okay to ask right now?
Why don't we get that, a motion on the floor for that, and then if it needs changes, it's amendable.
Okay, great.
All right, item 6.2, Mayor Payne is recommending the creation of a golf course committee.
Motion by Councilor Herrick, second by Councilor Dean, Councilor Grasky, please.
This is more just a clarification for the committee, and I might have, we're sorry, I lost it here. A great memo, don't get me wrong, I just was trying to see if, when it is in the bottom, when it says on the fourth Thursday of the month, is that, is that allowed to change? Just, I'm thinking in the future here, I think, that's when the golf committee meets now, but because it's in the ordinance, does that matter?
Uh, I actually don't love putting that in this, the special committees, the council has tons of power in what it gives to its special committees, so I don't wanna buy, I think the committee should be deciding that based on their schedules. So I'd be in favor of striking that.
Okay, I will make a motion to strike, or, no.
Yeah, 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 your motion is to strike the-
The fourth Thursday of the month?
The final sentence in the memo which reads, "The golf course committee shall meet no less than five times a year on the fourth Thursday of the month."
Well, I would suggest the fourth Thursday of the month, just to give flexibility to the committee to be able to meet when possible.
Okay.
Or when they find best for their committee.
The motion is to strike the words "on the fourth Thursday of the month" at the end of the memo. Is there a second? Second is by Councilor Fennessy. Is there objection to this amendment? Hearing none, the amendment is adopted by unanimous consent. Further discussion on the memo?
I do have one other, I'm sorry. This might have just been, we were getting this in on time, and so it says in the, excuse me, the memo here, where it has the appointees, it says term expiry May 2025. Should it say 26 or 25?
26.
Okay. It's correct in the agenda, or I'm sorry, yes, it's correct in the agenda, just, I think it was just trying to get it in on time, and no harm, no foul.
Yep.
Okay.
Counselor, was that all, Councilor Grasky?
Yes.
Counselor Elm?
I think you had clarified this, not earlier today, but in the past, but while our partnership with Kemper is strong, and I don't anticipate separating with them, but should this be broader than just including them as advisory members? Should it be like a consultant or a management company, rather than stating Kemper specifically?
I actually, that's a question for the golf course committee, and I think it's something that they should take up, because they were the ones that originally felt they should continue to exist, and I think Kemper really agreed. I think it's, as with all committees or commissions, it's a worthy exercise for them to determine their own mission, to generate some bylaws. I think the purpose I'm trying to express here, though, is this committee was created to advise Kemper Sports, because it was born out of the contract with Kemper Sports. So if, if that contract were to expire or be terminated in some way, we're back to the drawing board and determining a management plan for the golf course, and the committee may do different things. It may have different membership. So my opinion right now would be, it should expire once the agreement with Kemper expires, and then we should do something new. But I also think the golf course committee is the proper body to debate that question.
That makes sense, I was just concerning the legalities of that relationship were to end, and then you're having meetings under this policy with their name on it, they, would they remember they need to update that before they move forward? You know, I'm not sure if that would even happen, so, but thanks for that information.
Councilor Grasky?
I just, if you don't mind me clarifying, we went through pretty much the inception 2020 notes, and those terms are really borrowed from notes and minutes and things like that. So this was very thoroughly pressed, in my opinion, to help give today's interpretation of what has developed. So it's a fun committee, it just has got some good glory to it, so it's good.
Councilor Sweeney?
My recollection is the genesis of this golf was born by putting it out to a contract before Kemper came. Kemper was one of the companies that bid on the process, so, and then it just evolved, and I think we've done a good, people have done a good job on the golf committee, but that's, that's how it started. We decided to go to market, so to speak, way back when, and then it just continued on. And I think the committee there felt that we needed to have a group of people meet on a somewhat of a regular basis, just to advise the Kemper Sports and to get the local viewpoint of, we didn't want Kemper to be the outside expert all the time. So I think that's how it, and I think it's worked well. Like Lindsey said, it's a, it's a good committee, and it works well.
I just wanna say, in the context of the golf course committee, this committee has really proven me wrong from my original opinions of it. It comes from these histories, correct, it started, we had a task force of educated, interested citizens and city staff that worked on putting out a bid and selecting a contractor. And then it was meant to dissolve, because that contract is quite strong and gives Kemper pretty much all of the power to make decisions. So the committee can't really be making policy for the golf course, so I didn't think it should exist, because it risks confusion over who's making the decisions. Where I turned out to be very wrong is that it's just proven to be a very valuable partnership between the city and Kemper, because, one, Kemper really wanted the opinion of the city, and I am not the person that should be given the advice on the golf course. That'd be even worse than advice on your golf game from me. But the, so I needed people to give that advice, and the way the committee's been constructed, and the way they've given the advice, is they've helped improve Kemper's reputation and make sure that their, the decisions the company is making are popular with the golfers themselves. So it's been an extraordinarily valuable partnership, and I'm very pleased to have been wrong on it. Any, Councilor Fennessy?
Unless I was misunderstanding Counselor Elm's point, I think you got, maybe lost, where by having, having this in here saying, you know, under the new management of Kemper Sports in the, in the description of the golf course committee, wouldn't it be better served not to have that? Because if, if down the road Kemper Sports says, you know, this has been a fun ride, but we're, we're gonna move on, or the city says, you know, we're gonna move on, wouldn't, wouldn't this golf course committee still, still have tremendous value, if, if not even probably more, if, if they're, you know, during the, like, the seeking of a new, new management firm, or whatever, and if there was a new management firm, I would hope that the golf course committee would, would stay on to, you kinda give their, give their thoughts, their influence, their, you know, some guidance, where, like, like Kemper Sports isn't, isn't coming in from, from across the bridge, you know, they're coming in from, in outside, and if there was a different management company, I would assume they'd be coming from the outside. So I think the, I think the golf course committee just as a whole has a lot of value that they can bring to that public part, public-private partnership, and I don't think it's exclusive to Kemper Sports. And, you know, moving, moving down the road, if, you know, take out Kemper Sports and put in XYZ management firm, I think there's still a lot of value in having this golf course committee just in, in general.
Yeah, it's, we can design this anyway that council wants, the council's creating a special committee. The, help me with the, I see the term Kemper Sports in the background, which is just given for, to reference the history, and then I see it naming representatives of Kemper Sports to, as advisory members. Am I missing?
Oh, you wanna what, I'm, no, maybe that's me that's putting more influence on the, the management of Kemper Sports, because it's in the background paragraph and not in the actual policy.
I should say I actually agree with the broader point, that the golf course committee can be larger, and probably should be larger, than just facilitating the relationship with that company. Defining it, though, the only thing I'm recommending is, is asking for their advice in how- Defining it though, the only thing I'm recommending is, is asking for their advice in how, what it, what it should be doing. And then we can adopt whatever they send us. Uh, so I, I'm open to amendments to this, but the, I mean, I'm not opposed to any amendments to this at all. I, I just would rather they, these appointees weigh in on that. Counselor Graski?
Oh, I just wanted to add in that, that those, those five advisory members, uh, do consist of city, um, appointee as, uh, what am I looking for? Um, city employees.
Members.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just to, so it's, it's not just strictly like committee with the, uh, the management company.
Further discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of, of creating the golf course committee according to the language contained in the memo in front of you as amended, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries and please note that it was unanimous. This actually requires a two-thirds vote.
All right, item six point three is committee appointments. Um, do you want me to read them together or separately?
Uh, together, please.
The first is to appoint Scott Gordon for a one-year term to the golf course committee expiring May 2026. Second is to reappoint Barb Hoag for a one-year term expiring May 2026. A third is to reappoint Troy Clark for a one-year term expiring May 2026. And the fourth is to reappoint Lindsey Graski for a one-year term expiring May 2026.
Motion is by Counselor LeDeen, second by Counselor Elm. Uh, I'm just only saying for, I, I learned a lot about committee appointments recently and unless it's otherwise specified, the appointing authority is supposed to be naming the chair. I am not naming a chair, even though we haven't articulated that. I'm not naming a chair. That is a question I'm leaving to the golf course committee. Counselor Moffett.
Just a clarifying question. I know we've had one of these functioning, but we just created it also. And so are these reappointments or appointments?
They're appointments.
Okay.
They're appointments. Uh, if, is there any objection to me considering this question to be the appointment of these four members? Thank you for clarifying that. Counselor Sweeney?
The appointments, I, I, I believe in, in Barb, uh, Hoag is here, it's the president of the ladies golf league and the president of the men's golf league. So that's how those positions are. And when they change, um, then they would change. And, um, Troy Clark, I think, is, is the president of the, the men's league and Barb is the president of the women's league. So that's how, and if they were not to be the, then whoever was would, would take over that position.
The, the policy that you just passed requires me to appoint a women's club member and a men's club member. So conce- they, they happen to be those leaders, but conceivably, as long as they are members of that club, they're eligible. Let's, let's always use the word appoint, even if they are reappointments. And I think I'll, I'll just describe in the memo if they're reappointments. Okay, further discussion on the appointments. Question is whether to confirm all four appointments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries.
Item seven point two is the business of the Public Works Committee with a meeting held on June 5th. Is there a report from the chair?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a brief one here, um, from the Public Works Committee on, on June 5th, um, few updates here. Uh, moving forward on phase two of the Hammond Avenue project, reported by Director Janago to the committee that things are going smoothly there. East Fifth Project is underway. Excuse me. Uh, had discussion on water utility acquisition, um, working on hammering out a scope uh, to what the consultant is to look at and hopefully we'll have that scope and a price tag for that consultant soon. Um, also had discussion, um, Counselor Moffett had brought forward concerning the, uh, the one ways on Ogden John and Banks Avenue from Bellknap to 21st. Public Works Committee is going to look at what it would look like to change those to, to two-way streets, but that's very beginning. We've just started there. A lot more discussion to be had on that topic. Um, as for the action items that we've brought to the council tonight, um, you will see the relocation plans for the sanit- sanitary sewers related to the Blotnik Bridge project. There is an update to our agreement with Benson Electric, a wetland mitigation, uh, credit, um, purchase for the building of two duplexes on Spartan Circle. The contracts for the Tower Avenue Reconstruction Project, three vehicle purchases, and the approval of a grant agreement with the Federal Railroad Administration for a feasibility study and planning of grade separation of North 28th Street and the BNSF rail yard between Oaks Avenue and Elmyra Avenue. And that is the report from the Public Works Committee. Um, I'll do my best to answer any questions and if not, um, it is my motion to approve all the items of the Public Works Committee.
Motion by Counselor LeDeen, second by Counselor Moffett to approve all of the items of the Public Works Committee. Further discussion. Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I just need a clarification. If we could look at, uh, the, the professional engine service agreement between the City of Superior and Short Elliott Hendrickson. They talk about only 90% design and that's kind of done throughout the, the papers. Is there a reason why it's not 100%? Is there something that's going to be coming up that we should be aware of or?
No, that's the, uh, uh, that's the amount that DOT is going to cover as part of the bridge project. So, uh, we, we probably wouldn't have done this work otherwise, but it's such a significant, I'm sorry, Counselor LeDeen, would you like?
Now, does Director Janago on?
He is.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and then if I'm correct, we, we are granting them a little leeway in the plans. I- is that correct?
Correct. The, uh, the project is a design build, so we're presenting a 90, 90% plan. Um, and when they do the remainder of the design of the bridge, if something has to shift, if something has to move, uh, but we're giving them basically, uh, um, everything that they're going to need to build it, but with just, like you said, a little bit of leeway to adjust, um, based on the bridge design.
All right, all right, thank you.
Counselor Elm?
Yeah, I, I was unfortunately unable to attend the meeting, but I see in the minutes at 3.3, the acquisition of the water uh, feasibility study. Says that, um, they chose a preferred consultant, but it doesn't state which one. Was that intentional or?
I can. Yeah, I can comment on that. Um, I was able to sit with, um, um, our contracts analyst, our finance department head and our public works, uh, department, leader and, um, assistant, and we were able to interview the applicants for that process. Um, we have a preferred consultant at this point, um, but they haven't officially been selected. Uh, we wanted a chance to work through what they view as how this process would work, like that scoping process. And, uh, and also importantly, to get some numbers on what the projected budget might look like for a project like this before we brought it back to the finance committee for approval. So we're still basically in that negotiation and questions phase with that applicant.
So it, it's worth mentioning, a process like this is very different than a bidding process. So in a bidding process, you, uh, the work is very defined. If, if you do a plumbing project, any licensed plumber should be qualified to bid on that project, right? And, and so you look for the lowest of those qualified bidders. Some projects, the expertise is so valuable that it's, it's more important than the cost that you have the most qualified person. The qualifications are more important. Historically, when we do that, it's called RFQ, a request for qualifications. They don't even put price on, on their bids, uh, their proposals. And then, uh, it's typically done internally, staff review, because you're looking at a lot of, you typically need staff expertise to review qualifications, who then negotiate, uh, a, a price with the bidder they prefer and then bring that proposal to the committee. What was different here is we wanted to bring some counselors into that, so we just kind of threw them all out, committee had discussion. So this is an internal process that we allowed to be a bit more external to get more opinions and advice. You will have now seen all of those proposals. They're out there in public. So when the administration brings a final proposal with a cost, with a specific, uh, firm, then you're debating, you know, do, do you really want to hire that firm? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thanks. I wanted clarification since it was so vague in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, the question is on all of the business of the Public Works Committee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Moving on to reports without recommendations at this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made? Hearing none will move on to old businesses, which is item 9.1, Finance Committee is recommending approval of the City of Superior, assuming full operations of Fairlawn Mansion and Museum, the Old Firehouse and Police Museum and the Whaleback Ship Museum.
Okay, counselors, it, uh, this was postponed and so we will pick up where we left off. However, I would like unanimous consent to just reset all of the rules of debate. Uh, in practice, in the same way we did in the last meeting. Uh, Counselor Fennessy, uh, has informed me he intends to make a motion to, uh, extend public comment by five minutes, if, if you have no problem adding public comment. So what I would ask is unanimous consent that we reset all rules of debate, begin with public comment and allow five minutes per speaker. Is there objection to that? Counselor Moffett?
I object to the public comment portion. This wasn't posted as a public hearing and so the public wasn't entitled to know that they would have the opportunity to speak upon this matter. It wasn't agendicized.
Okay, then, uh, I believe the ordinance, I'm going to call for motion in a second because now we have to resolve this, but the, sorry, I'm, uh, uh, figuring out the order. We should do this. First, is there objection to me resetting the rules of debate for counselors? The reason this is important, in a motion to postpone, you pick up exactly where you were the moment before the vote to, to postpone took place, which means many of you will be prohibited from speaking according to parliamentary procedure. We should not do that. So I, I, first, is there objection to resetting the council's rules of debate? Hearing none, those rules will be reset. So now the question is whether to allow public comment. So my argument is that the, the city ordinance, I, I can pull it up for exact language, city ordinance invites, uh, the public to comment on any item that is on the agenda. Now, under a strict parliamentary process, technically, I believe Counselor Moffett is correct that, uh, that opportunity was exhausted at the last meeting. However, I think most people would reasonably believe, uh, that, uh, because it's on the agenda, they would have had the right to speak, especially since most folks wouldn't know the arcane rules of Robert's rules. And, uh, quite frankly, I just, uh, uh, believe our conversations are better by inviting more discussion and debate. So is there a motion to, to allow public, uh, to suspend the rules and allow public comment on this item?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Johnson. Is there discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Just real quick, that if we're allowing ourselves more time to debate this, we should allow the public as well.
Uh, apologies, counselors. I do have to look up the ordinances. Changing the rules of debate may well require a two-thirds vote. It'll only take me a second. Uh, reading directly. Um, except that public comment, I think, is covered elsewhere. I'll read this out loud in just a second. Appreciate your patience. Where is public comment? Thank you. Any citizen who wishes, uh, any citizen who wishes to address the council on any agenda item may speak, may sign up with the city clerk, indicate the item number he or she wishes to address. And if he or she wishes to speak under business by the public here, she must identify the subject matter of the whole. I, the council welcomes public comments and constructive presentations that address specific issue. Otherwise direct by the council. I, I believe this requires a majority vote. I'd argue that ordinance probably commands it, but, uh, because it overrides Robert's rules. I'm going to take the vote anyways. Uh, the question, is there any further discussion? Question, Counselor Moffett?
Just a quick comment on this. I just, I, I'm not opposed to opening it, but if we're opening it, then I think we should leave it open for an additional meeting because people that understand how the agendas work and how the rules operate know that the public hearing was closed and they wouldn't have the opportunity to speak potentially if they knew the public hearing was closed and didn't attend.
Further discussion. Okay, hearing none, the question is whether to allow public comment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. In opinion of the chair, the motion carries. Okay, then we will proceed into public comment. The first person signed up is Caitlin Baumann. Uh, you will have five minutes.
My name is Caitlin Baumann. I live in East End and I'm board president of Superior Public Museums. Good evening, counselors, Mayor Payne, city staff and members of the public. Superior Public Museums has always valued constructive civil dialogue with this council and administration. Over the past year, we've welcomed every opportunity to respond to questions, provide information and clarify concerns regarding our nonprofit operations. In this spirit, we'd like to take a few minutes to respectfully address inaccurate statements made during the last city council meeting so we can move forward together with a shared understanding. For more than two decades, we've been a dedicated, mission-focused stewards of the city's historic sites. Throughout the past year, we've consistently shown up, collaborating in good faith, listening carefully, offering thoughtful alternatives and compromising when needed. We believe deeply in the value of this public-private partnership, which combines community-based leadership with city support. Maintenance. The SS Meteor experienced a structural crack and we responded swiftly and responsibly. We immediately informed the Public Works Department and have remained in active and ongoing communication. According to the engineers, the primary cause of the cracking is likely due to the combination of the settlement of the bow and the repeated uplift and settlement of the stern caused by the freeze saw cy- cy- cycles in the underlying soil. We are opening tomorrow. For years, SPM has consistently advocated for a greater investment in long-term maintenance needs. We have done this through formal capital budget requests, annual cons- council presentations, direct invitations to the board meetings, newsletter updates and one-on-one conversations with Mayor Payne and counselors. Our commitment to preserving these historic sites is clear. We've raised the alarm when needed, proposing solutions and welcome partnerships every step of the way. From 2018 to 2024, we have spent $165,000 on caretaking and maintenance for things like boilers, sprinkler repairs, paint, fire inspections, light, lighting, pest control, leaks, breakers, plumbing repairs, et cetera. Our strategic plan and accompanying maintenance plan for each of these sites outlines our commitment to this caretaking. Staffing. Over the years, we have had the privilege of exceptional staff. The board has worked very closely with the current museum's manager, supporting her vision and integrating new approaches across the organization. We've expanded opportunities for staff engagement, including participation in the annual meeting where staff shared innovative ideas. This year, we implemented a modest ticket price increase at both Fairlawn and the Meteor based on staff support. We are committed to fair compensation. Annual raises are provided based on performance and available funding. We understand and deeply value the goals of health insurance. While we've long explored offering health insurance, eligibility rules have prevented us from implementing a group plan. When we last had two full-time employees, one m- member was ineligible because they already had insurance from their spouse. While the other employee was eligible, it would have been illegal for us to pursue group, pursue group insurance with one eligible member. In addition, the $30,000 to $60,000 cost for two employees was not a sustainable budget item without an increase to our stipend. We are pursuing individual coverage, health reimbursement and ICRA as a more flexible way to support our employees' healthcare needs. With an increased stipend from the city, we can meet the city's minimum wage requirements and fully implement the ICRA. Collections. Up until last year, SPM operated under a collections policy approved on November 12th, 2014. This policy guided all deaccessioning decisions include following established museum best practices. This process was used to deaccession the Madeira Wheel in 2020, which was deteriorating based on the temperature fluctuations in the meteor. It is now properly maintained at the Split Rock Lighthouse where it overlooks the Madeira Shipwreck. Additionally, in 2022, logbooks related to the Great Lakes Steamship Frontenac were transferred to UW Superior's Lake Superior Maritime Collection where they're better aligned with the archive's scope. Again, to note, all deaccessioning policy protocols were handled in compliance with proper procedures of Superior Public Museums and the city council representative serving on the board was aware of the actions. In December of 2024, SPM formally adopted it. In December of 2024, SPM formally adopted an updated collections policy that fully aligns with all of the requirements outlined in the city's RFP. Fundraisers and fiscal management.
For thirty seconds.
Thank you. For twenty-five years, SPM has maintained strong fiscal management through diverse revenue streams, including donations, grants, memberships, admissions, and fundraisers. When our previous executive director relocated to southern Wisconsin, we initiated a hiring process with seven highly qualified candidates ready for interview. The mayor instructed us to halt this hiring process, and as such, since 2024, we've operated with one full-time staff member.
That is five minutes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Suzanne Prohaska.
You could do it.
Prohaska.
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 Okay. Suzanne Prohaska, East End, and I am on the Executive Committee for Superior Public Museums, Secretary and Treasurer. To continue. Request for increased stipend. We have consistently requested an increase to our stipend over the years with the city council representatives actively advocating on our behalf. We submitted a memo regarding the potential use of ARPA funds and maintained ongoing communication with President Grasky about tourism and public arts grants. Each year, we submit capital project needs during priority-based budget process to ensure our funding requirements are clearly communicated. Through our former executive director, we have successfully secured grants from the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation, Wisconsin Department of Administration's Cultural Organization Grant, Wisconsin Historical Society, and Wisconsin Humanities Care's Relief Program. Our current museum's manager has a strong grant writing experience, expertise, and had multiple grant opportunities and plans in place this year, which we unfortunately had to pause due to uncertainty around SPM's role in daily operations. Annual meeting and public access. As stewards of city-owned properties, SPM fully complies with Wisconsin open meeting laws. All board meetings, including our annual meeting, are publicly noticed and open to the public. For all meetings, including the annual meeting, notices were posted at City Hall, the public library, and on the gift shop door at Fairlawn. We are committed to transparency and public accountability. Board recruitment. We actively advertise for new board members through a variety of methods to ensure broad community representation and governance. We have promoted the application process via our newsletter, social media, and through direct outreach. We also share board opportunities at community meetings and public events. Our process includes a formal application, interviews, and a review to ensure thoughtful and inclusive selection aligned with our mission and community values. Board terms. Our current bylaws specify that each board member serves a three-year term. Active members are welcome to continue their service beyond their initial three-year term. SPM yearly holds elections for officers, which are voted on by the full board. We deeply value diversity of perspective and actively welcome new voices and fresh opinions. Board appointments. Twenty-five years ago, when SPM was founded, the mayor was provided appointment power for a portion of the board seats. This was changed in 2010 to a fourteen-at-large board members and one city council representative. This was approved by the board and included a representative from the city council. This is the appointment structure SPM has utilized for the past fifteen years. SPM values having city council representative on our board to ensure city needs are being met. During the proposal process, our executive leadership met with Mayor Payne to discuss increasing city-appointed membership on the board as a way to strengthen city ties. Mayor Payne expressed support for this as a component of a contract with SPM. City of Superior Municipal Register of Historic Places. In August 2022, city staff joined SPM for a board meeting to share information about the City of Superior Municipal Register of Historic Places. The board voted unanimously to move forward with the application process. In fall 2022, all three sites were approved by the city council and are listed on the register's website. In our last correspondence with city staff, he shared that the plaque company had lost the order in 2024 of April, and he was working to get a new one ordered. In closing, we hope this information helps clarify some of the misinformation shared during the last city council meeting and highlights SPM's longstanding commitment to professional, trustworthy, and financially responsible operations of the three historic sites. We have always welcomed and continue to welcome open communication and collaboration with city leaders in the community. Thank you for the opportunity to share more.
Thank you. Next is Dale Cosial of Howard Ginnison Road.
My name's Dale Cosial, and I reside in Duluth. For the past eighteen years, I have been a volunteer with Superior Public Museums, and I have sat on the board of directors for the last five. At the previous council meeting, there were extensive discussions about administrative matters such as management, supervision, position descriptions, wage steps. However, there's another topic that needs to be discussed, and that is non-collection property. During the past twenty-five years, Superior Public Museums has acquired a substantial inventory of non-collection property. It ranges from Christmas decorations to the dishes, flatware, glassware needed to host events at Fairlawn, to the air compressor that blows the meteor's whistle, to the tools and materials that keep the meteor ship shape, to the front desk, and the whole inventory of the gift shop at the Old Firehall. A lot of things have been added to the collection over the past twenty-five years. These assets serve as the operational infrastructure for these three city-owned museums. Without these or similar assets, the museum simply could not function. Since the city may elect to assume management of the three museums, they must also decide what to do about the operational infrastructure required for them. The most pragmatic and lowest-cost option would be for the city to purchase the existing SPM non-collection property outright. This is available as a single-lot purchase, as-is, where-is, for a lump-sum price of This purchase would ensure a virtually seamless transfer of management from SPM to the city. The alternative is for the city to replace the operational infrastructure with new items purchased from other sources at the city's discretion. These would be at today's prices, including shipping and handling costs. In addition, there would be substantial administrative costs for procurement, cost management, supervision, and direct labor. The cost for that option is not known. Should the city elect to pursue the second alternative, then Superior Public Museums will need to vacate the premises no later than August 5th. This operation will require the full involvement of the current staff. After August 5th, the museums could be resupplied with new infrastructure of the city's choosing. The amount of time required for that is not known, but would likely cause a substantial delay in the reopening of the museums. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susie Olson. I'm in my second term as a board member on the Superior Public Museums, and I also serve as the fire liaison for the State of Wisconsin Fire and Police Hall of Fame. Thank you for pausing the discussions at the last meeting. The museums are too important to make rushed decisions without considering all options thoroughly. Two weeks ago, we heard a lot of opinions from community members, SPM staff, board members, and from the council. I've watched and re-watched these meetings, taking time to consider all of the points that were brought up. At that meeting, I heard a few times that if the city takes over the daily operations, SPM wouldn't need to be bogged down with the mundane tasks and could focus more on the fun stuff, like fundraising. Operating these museums has never been a mundane task to us. It has never been a burden, and it has never bogged us down. In fact, these three museums are the sole purpose of SPM. They get our entire attention and all of our funds. If the city takes over operating these museums, they will have to compete with all the other departments in the city for funding each and every budget cycle. That may seem okay for now, but we don't know what the future holds. I've been a city resident my entire life and a city employee for twenty-three years. I've seen some lean times that the city has had to sustain. I've been witness to department heads having to make very difficult decisions based on budget cuts, shared revenue cuts, tax levy limits, hiring freezes, you name it. The museums may not always be a priority to the future council or the mayor, but they will always be a priority to SPM. Our staff is also our priority, and we would love to provide them with higher wages and benefits. Believe me, this is a huge discussion point at our annual budget meetings and has been a big concern for many of the board members. However, we cannot increase the wages or offer benefits, especially if the city isn't willing to invest more into the museums by increasing the stipend, which hasn't happened in over ten years. I urge you tonight to not approve the recommendation from the Finance Committee, but instead, to turn the MOU with SPM into a contract, increase the museum's stipend in the 2026 budget, and if you wish, add more mayoral appointments to the board. Perhaps create a committee, as in the case of Kemper Sports and the Golf Course Committee. Then sit back and celebrate the success of the museums with SPM. If it truly is the will of the council to assume the daily operations of the museum, then I implore you to not rush the transfer. Extend the MOU till the end of the year, rather than ending it August 5th in the middle of tourist season. This would give adequate time to plan for that 2026 budget cycle, to hire a new executive director, and to have a stable plan in place so that the museums, the staff, and the collections do not suffer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Irene Rider.
Hello, you may remember, hello, you may remember me, Irene Rider, and I have a speech explaining how I do not think the city should take over the museums. The board is doing an amazing and beautiful job already. I don't understand why you understand how this would work out. It might, but it might not. My auntie, the one and only Caitlin Baumann, and her amazing, fun, cool, bunch more compliments, colleagues are doing a great and very, 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 nine million more verries, good job. And they host cool, fun events and gatherings. Some of my favorites are Victorian death traps and Quiet Santa. Their events are amazing, and most are good for fun ages and all types. Sorry, I'm losing my place. People don't always like the choices of the board, but do you, city council, like all the choices that your parents made for you when you were a kid? No, probably not. But in this case, they are just doing what's best for the museums. And the board loves their job and are passionate for it. And when I am old enough, I want to be president of the board, like my auntie, who is doing her best, like always. The board is made up of cool volunteers who love and are passionate about their job. They are open to ideas from truly anyone, and they would love to team up with city council and the whole city. They will always be open to an idea, a thought, a hope. Even if it does not happen, please rethink this idea. Vote to keep the board. Vote to keep the smiles! Just gonna fix this.
Thank you. Next is Alyssa Rider.
Alyssa Rider from East End. Uh, I just want to provide a brief comment as a resident of Superior and a fan of the museums. After hearing so many thoughtful speakers last session, I still found myself wondering why so many of these issues and concerns could not have been addressed in a conversation a long time ago. There has been so much time, effort, and the proverbial blood, sweat, and tears put into this process. I'm honestly confused by the hullabaloo this has become. It's become so complicated and convoluted, when it seems like simplicity may be the best route. The council already recognized a similar model to the Superior Public Museum's management of the three city museums with the golf course, city-owned, externally managed, with city involvement. It seems like increased city involvement and participation on the SPM board is wholly welcomed. This model is already successfully executed and seems like it would fit the situation very simply. It makes sense. This would open the door to more city input regarding concerns in management, preservation, projects, focus, and allow for discussion, growth, and education of all parties involved. Just like allowing the public input for the debate today, we can be better because of it, because we're having this conversation. There's always room for improvements, but there has to actually be input, respectful challenge, and participation for it to happen. It's easy to talk about how things need to be better, but actually executing it and coming up with a plan, that's the next big step. And that takes a team, which the city and SPM could be. The goal of free admission for folks is fantastic, and I would venture a lot of folks don't mind contributing the nominal fee towards an experience such as a museum's. I was going to suggest a pay-as-you-can daylight theater or free passes that could be checked out by the library for citizens, but then I learned they already have established free and half-off admission days and free admission passes at the library, so there are accessible options in that regard. The concerns about employee wages and benefits sound like they could be addressed by simply increasing the stipend for the museums, the stipend that hasn't been increased in a decade. The SPM board already has a plan in place to increase wages and instate benefits for employees with the stipend increase. Rather than have the city take all the time to create the job descriptions and the associated HR projects, this again just seems simpler. Financially, increasing the stipend would still leave the city with a budget surplus to assist other departments who could use some extra funds. Or, as mentioned last session, with the Historic Library and the Princess Theater, rather than have the success bar set as the roofs didn't cave in, use the funds to create and revive those spaces into usable venues for everyone together. Finally, the city government has a city to focus on, numerous departments, staff, equipment, properties, constantly juggling the wants and needs. Your focus is on the entirety of the city and how it functions as a whole. The museums are understandably not the number-one priority here. With Superior Public Museums and management of museums, it's their sole focus, their priority mission, and has been for a substantial amount of time. Why would we want to allow the priorities to shift here? Of course, the city can manage the museums, but do you really want to? Do you feel like you can do a markedly better job than the current nonprofit running it for decades? Can the city match the dedication, the passion, and the experience of Superior Public Museums to preserve these priceless pieces of history in our cities? Is this truly what's in the best interest of the museums? Let's be a team. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last person who has signed up is Jane Carlson of East Third Street.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jane Carlson. I live at 908 East Third Street in Superior. My home is directly located behind Fairlawn. It was built by Grace Patterson, and Fairlawn is a site of a residential neighborhood. And any decision regarding the operations directly impact both the property and the residents who live nearby. I have lived at this residence for thirty-seven years, so I am a long time, I'm very much been happy with how Fairlawn has been run all these years. For many of us, our homes represent our largest investment. Thus, how Fairlawn is managed will inevitably affect the neighborhood property values and the quality of life. This brings forward a certain concern of many residents in the area that we share. What is the city's underlying motive? Why now? Why? Transparency is essential. At present, both the rationale for the proposed changes and a clear communication and sustained long-term plan are lacking. Without this transparency, it's difficult for the community to place trust in the process. So on it, we want to know what the motive is. I also urge the council to visit the original document. I also urge the council to visit the original documents transferring ownership from Fair Lawn to the City of Superior. I have a doctorate in policy. That is one of the things you all should have done from the very beginning. That agreement likely outlines the specific intentions, operational guides, or restrictions meant to safeguard Fair Lawn's mission. Additionally, the historical site records related to the Superior Public Museum oversees all these properties, not just the recent MOU, should also be consulted. These documents provide crucial context, particularly given by Grace Patterson, during our vision of Fair Lawn's future. As it stands, this process feels more like fire-ready aim, the approach at this risk destabilizing the cherished historical and cultural institution of our community. I have always been happy with how Fair Lawn has been run, and I've lived there 37 years. But I want to support the best possible plan for Fair Lawn's future, one that assures my grandson will be able to walk in the halls when he is an adult. Whatever you decide, please make it the right decision for Fair Lawn, for our neighborhood, and for Superior. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts my list of signups. Would anybody else like to speak? Please go forward. If you come forward, state your name, and we will give you five minutes.
Valerie Burke. I'm a SPM employee. I was not planning on speaking tonight. But a couple of things. The $400,000 figure, in my opinion, is wild exaggeration. We have a garage on the property full of broken furniture. That certainly can go. I am wondering if the SPM board is aware of the fact that when you dissolve a nonprofit, you have to give any proceeds or materials to another nonprofit? So you can't just come in and start ripping out desks and furniture and computers and say, "Great, you've got to then give all that equipment to somebody." Please don't extend the MOU. It has been going on for a year or more. The stress on the staff is enormous. We need a decision. We can't keep going like this. I truly feel the city has a good plan. They're transparent. They will better provide for the employees. The collections are in dire need of work, and I think they will fulfill that. So please, make a decision and thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in public comment? Please come forward.
I'm Dr. Robert Yonkinay, 2107 Ogden Avenue in Superior. I too wasn't really going to speak, but I did prepare something in case I was. So I was the former administrator and interim director at Superior Public Museums, and I'm, I'm want to tell the perspective of a former staff member. So I do agree with what SPM members were saying, that they had a great run and had lots of achievements in the last 25 years. But let us not forget why it's done so great. This is mainly because of all the hard work and achievements of the past directors, the current museum manager, the administrative staff, the tour guides, past and present, the volunteers, that are helping to keep the museums run smoothly. They help have taken care of all the three sites, including maintaining the gardens at Fair Lawn, giving tours, managing the collections, organizing events, helping out with rentals, holding fundraisers, and keeping the history alive of all three sites. I know, as I was one of those staff members for four years and have seen the hard work that all these people do. Remember that once the city takes over management, the three sites, its collections, and most importantly, the staff and all the volunteers will still all be there. It isn't like they all magically are going to go away. The only thing that will change is that the staff themselves will now become city employees, which means they will have better wages, healthcare benefits. It was mentioned that SPM would try to take care of healthcare benefits, but the pool is too small, so the city can take better care of providing healthcare. And the city can also provide retirement benefits. Who would not want the staff to have all these amazing benefits? This is how you attract and keep good staff. Without these benefits, you get a high turnover, which is never good for any organization. The SPM board has had over 20 years to try to obtain these benefits to the staff, but still has not been able to do so. So it's time for new leadership. I feel that the city is very much able to handle their role as new leaders, especially with having a new Parks and Recs Director who has a background in working with museums. In addition to the current staff, the city will be able to hire other professionals to help run the museums and help in managing all the collections at the three sites. Like I mentioned last time, I still think there can still be the role for the current board of SPM. But instead of managing the museums, both financially or managing the staff, I can see their role being more as a Friends of the Museums group. And they could even have three subcommittees, where each committee can focus on one of the three sites. Each committee can come up with fundraisers and help out with the events and work on other things like work weekends that need to be done at all the three sites. And if they still stay as a nonprofit, they don't have to sell off all their inventory. I'm therefore in fully support of the Finance Committee's recommendation that the City of Superior should take over the management of its own museums. And this is directed to the City Council members. When you place your vote, you need to think what is best for the museums and the staff themselves, not what is best for the SPM board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thought I saw one more person like to speak in public comment. Again, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Amy Brooks. I live at 12th and Winks in the downtown district. Thank you very much for voting to have the opportunity for the public to speak. I was here for the last council meeting and the over two hours, I think it was, of debate on this topic. And I apologize that my comments are going to be just as disorganized as my notes, but I just wanted to share them with you. I have no affiliation whatsoever to SPM or to the city. The only connection I have is that I've attended every Christmas event that they have there. I'm not sure what it's called, but I've very much enjoyed the museums. And in my attendance there, I've felt that they very expertly walked the line between preserving the facilities and the collection while also enjoying, allowing visitors to enjoy and like participate and immerse themselves in it, rather than being like an all-hands-off kind of place. Just in digesting the conversation today and the conversations from last council meeting, I guess I'm still just really confused as to how we got here from moving from an MOU to now the city taking over. Councillor Fennessy, last council meeting, you mentioned the integrity of the process. And I also am just kind of confused about how we went from like basically like an RFP or like some kind of proposal process and then ended up with the city just saying, "Thank you for submitting that 350-page proposal, but we're not going to try to take it over." And again, I'm just like at, I'm at the forest level. I'm nowhere near knowing the ins and outs of these things, but it just seems like this is a solution in search of a problem. The worst thing that I heard about SPM's management is that they don't provide benefits to their employees. And as somebody who's worked at a nonprofit early on in my career, nonprofits pride themselves on having a low administrative budget. So I think that shouldn't be a mark against SPM. And I can't speak for them, but I would guess that if the stipend was to be increased or you were to provide more money, that they would be happy to provide their employees with benefits. It seems like making this, these positions now, instead of a nonprofit, to become city government positions in order to provide benefits, just seems like that should be, that should be doable under SPM's management. I worry about the cost. I think the cost was brought up extensively last time. And as a taxpayer, I also worry about that $250,000 to $500,000. I would rather see it go to, somebody mentioned Carnegie Library last time. I drive past that every day. And I guess I just am still confused as to why the city would want to take it on. I think the city does a great job in so many different areas. But as a, somebody who's also spent a lot of my career in city governments, we're always asked to do more with less, and we're always spread very thin. I think it was Susie that talked about lean budgets. And just because like the city's looking good this year doesn't mean that we want to take on something like that. It just seems like the complaints against SPM don't seem to be significant in terms of maintaining their facilities and accessibility to the public. So I would just encourage you to vote no and go back to the table with SPM, who has a proven track record of maintaining these facilities. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in public comment? Forward.
I'm Jerry Payne. I reside at 603 Seventh Street in East End. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I don't have anything prepared. I'm just going to shoot from the cuff here. My wife and I live at 603 Seventh. Our house was built in 1888, four years prior to Fair Lawn Mansion. It was designed by the same architect. My wife, in high school and her first couple summers of college, was a tour guide at all three museums. We both have a deep passion for the history and especially the historic buildings in Superior. To this day, we are very close friends with most of the people she worked with at those museums. I've been following this conversation, this debate, this topic for over a year now, and I really haven't had an opinion on it. I've just kind of been following it. It's not super political. It's not in my wheelhouse. It's just something I'm interested in. I'm very interested in the history of Superior. When I moved back here in 2010, I was extremely disappointed to see the loss of many historic buildings in this town. Somebody know I've been sidelined, involved in local politics since then. Most of the people that are involved in the loss of those buildings are not in this room anymore. That's the politics side of it. But my opinion on this, as I follow it, I was at the meeting two weeks ago, and I just can't see what we have to lose from the city taking management. I heard assurances that all the employees will be retained, they will be paid better, they will have better benefits, the current board will still be involved, and the museums will be kept with a larger budget. I just don't see any downside to that. I've heard some comments tonight and last, at the last meeting about, you know, things change over time. I understand that. Things do change. I can tell you, from what I've seen, the current administration has, and this council, has a deep appreciation for the historical buildings in this town. They've taken on the Carnegie Library. They've taken on the Princess Theater, along with other projects. So as things sit right now, I see that the city could always turn to another nonprofit, the existing board, anybody else to manage those projects, just like they did with the golf course. But if things were to take a turn in the other way, not saying, this board could also change. The people on the board could change over time. You know, most of them have outlived their terms as they are now. If they're not happy with the current management, here we are starting this entire process again and fighting for what, another year, two years? Whatever the city has to do, again, I'm not that educated. I've just been following along. So I guess my opinion is just for the betterment of the museums and the collections and the history of our city, I don't see what we have to lose by putting more money and more resources behind it. That's all I.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in public comment? Anybody else like to speak in public comment? Anybody else like to speak in public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will proceed back to the question, which is whether to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation to assume full operations of Fair Lawn Mansion and Museum, the Old Firehouse and Police Museum, and the Whaleback Ship Museum. The discussion rules are reset. Councillor.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for speaking tonight. Appreciate all the input. Question is over to Mayor, I guess. I'm not sure if public has had a chance to see what was in the agenda packet tonight. I don't know if you could kind of high-level summarize what that is to kind of give a little more detail from the city end?
Sure. You're referencing the transition plan that I added to the packet and sent out to the City Council on Monday, yesterday morning. That was a plan that several councillors asked of me at the last meeting, that there should be a written plan to review. This plan is, it, I worked on it all the way up until the moment I sent it, but it's a reflection of the plan that I largely described in the Finance Committee during those many conversations in closed session and outside of closed session about how the city would undertake the transition in the first year of operations of the museum. What are the step-by-step tasks? What are the, can the city afford to do it? What's the impact to the existing 2025 budget? What does a preliminary 2026 budget look like? What is our hiring process for the staff? And of the individual tasks necessary for assuming operations through that first year, who is doing what and when are they doing it? So I put down everything that I knew at the time, everything I've learned, discussed, decided, in every single hour since. I hope that you'll forgive what I consider to be fairly abysmal writing. I worked on this. I've been traveling for the last week and a half, so I literally worked on this on the coasts of two different oceans. But this represents our plan today. As with any plan, you know, it will not survive first contact with the enemy, and it will require flexibility. But I hope what I've built into it is a recognition that the staff are competent and capable of administering what will ultimately be a division of the city, that we have the leadership, that we have the funds, that it would not have an adverse impact and should have done right, several meaningful advantages. I did write in there that this does not constitute my recommendation. I do have my own opinions on the matter, but the, this is drafted in response to the Finance Committee's recommendation. The Finance Committee, having looked at all of the options, having spent a significant amount of time over the last year, came to a decision. I've had several opinions along the way. I've made several recommendations along the way. The committee made a decision, and so I have been in the process of preparing the city in the event that council ratifies that decision. This is the reflection of that work.
Thank you. And we're not specifically voting on this tonight, correct? This is just some guardrails and guidelines as you perceive it from those meetings.
Correct. So, you know, there's a little bit of a division of powers here. The, I think it's important that the decision to operate the museums is a policy decision that should be made by the council. Once that decision is made, the administration has the task of doing that. There will be many policy decisions to be made along the way. As with then, we are regularly making policy decisions for departments that we manage right now. So the council's still going to play a meaningful role in many decisions along the way. But this is my report to you on if this vote carries tonight, you see what I do tomorrow, the next day, what the staff do tomorrow, the next day, all the way until one year from the start of operations.
Thank you. I see the mention that is, is in the November 2025 area here. It says about SPM continuing to exist as a nonprofit and if they partner with the city. Some of those meetings, there's been discussions, even at the last meeting was the Friends of the Museums as a nonprofit. Like if SPM, if the city does take over operations, I didn't see, I went searching for Friends in here and I didn't find any of the word. And what does that look like? And what, what, what does that look like in terms of how that would work?
Right. To a certain extent, I, I think you, you did make that suggestion and at the end, there was a limit to how much I can conclude about that because I try to keep this focused on the things that the administration has the power to do. And so I, I can't impose any requirements at all on, on the Superior Public Museum's nonprofit. However, if this decision is made, I, I've expressed to them, to the committee, that I believe that it would be valuable to maintain a partnership wherein they, they can play certainly an advisory role to the city, but also play a major role in the development of the museums. And, and this is a relationship that exists in other entities. The, the one I'm most familiar with is the Friends of Superior Public Library, an independent, an independent body that does fundraising, but is also just very closely connected to the library. So the, the only reference you see to that in here is if it exists. If they choose to continue to exist, I, I recognize many of the things that they said. They have, people on this board have an incredible passion for the museums. If they want to continue working with it, I, I think they'd be a very valuable asset to the city and city staff in my administration would be available to them. I would direct first the Parks and Rec Director and then eventually the Museum Director, if that's the route the council goes, to, to attend to all of their meetings, to give reports, to solicit advice.
And I, I would just like it to be known that I think that is highly welcome and having that advisory role moving forward would be incredibly important. Could you, Mayor, respond to some of the comments? I was probably taken back about the SPM-owned assets. Maybe that's a question to redirect Frog. I don't know if he was here at the time, but what are, what are your thoughts on that? Of course, we don't know all those details, but just to give a broader perspective.
What, what the video will not have heard was Counselor Sweeney saying, "I wouldn't go there," and I probably won't. However, the, the reason being, some questions. I, I think that the question of the collection is beyond dispute. I don't believe I heard any members of the board dispute that tonight. The question of the buildings is beyond dispute. There are things that may be in dispute. We would negotiate those things using our attorney. I would not discuss those negotiations in public right now. However, what I can say is it would be a negotiation. And I do reference many of those things in this plan. There, there would be assets necessary to operate the museums that we may or may not receive at operations. What I expressed in the plan is my confidence that we would be able to replace them probably at an upgrade fairly effectively. It's one of the advantages that is apparent in city management. We have pretty significant equipment funds. So assets, tools, equipment for maintaining the museums, we, we own plenty of that. If we need to buy more, we have a fund for buying that. Technology, we own significant stock. We have a fund to buy more as necessary. If there are things that even, it's actually hard to see and I would, I would change it to be a little bit more clear, but in terms of, say, the gift shop revenue, I've actually accounted for that in the budget. So you see, I think the number in there is $12,000 of revenue. That's the net. That's what we would expect after purchasing against gift shop inventory. That's, that's the way that SPM budgets it, budgets that as well. So would there be some negotiation of purchasing things? Probably. The, that would be a negotiation, but the, the city maintains pretty healthy funds for the purchase of equipment. That's been a goal of mine for years to make sure that, that we are in a strong position to be able to equip ourselves effectively at any given moment.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Moff.
Yeah, just a few thoughts. The, some of the museum staff was present at our HR committee meeting and they, they're operating the museums already and they can continue to operate their museums. And so this idea that they would just close or cease operation, you know, if this happened, is, is not accurate because the people implementing the day-to-day operations and the work to keep the facilities open every day wouldn't change. Just to talk briefly about the healthcare thing. It's really expensive to offer health insurance for one or two people. Totally get that. A lot of nonprofits do really struggle with that. And they solve the problem by offering a stipend, a healthcare stipend, and they try and increase that every year. And so like, that's the solution for that. And of course, you can say, "Well, that could be expensive too," but you can fit that into your budget. And so, you know, when we talk about fiscal management and fiscal priorities, when we started this process over a year ago, there was hundreds of thousands of dollars in their reserve fund, but their employees didn't have enough stipend for healthcare. So it's about prioritizing what's important to you. And, and of course, they, they would say, "Well, we need that reserve fund because we could have large expenditures coming up at these facilities and we don't know how to plan for that," or whatever. And it's like, but then it goes back to what they were talking about earlier, about maintenance and capital improvement expenses. And they said they spent, I think it was $160,000 last year on maintenance and capital improvements. But their MOU very clearly lays out that they're responsible for maintenance, right? So like, you got to change a light bulb, you know, you have to do a little touch-up paint in the bathroom or whatever. You know, things come up. You've got maintenance expenses. But when you have capital improvements, those are the responsibility of the city and it's clearly laid out in there. And so when there are larger capital improvement items where you would potentially need to have this large reserve fund, those aren't the responsibility of the museum association, the SPM. Those items are the responsibility of the city. And so say you need a new roof, they came to the council and the council helped them with a new roof, you know, because those, those capital expense things are depreciable, depreciating items. They're larger items. And so the city has always been responsible for those. And so I, I think it shows their priorities to just have this money sitting in a checking account, by the way, not a CD or an investment account or anything. You know, and, and the interest off of that, the interest alone off of that per year was probably enough to offer a healthcare stipend to the person that needed it, if they would have put it in a CD or something. And then it's, it's really awkward to hear about this collection of things that they own because it was, it's not a collection. The, the collection is like the, the items that are sessioned as like museum items, right? And so like, that's the collection. That's not in dispute. These are organizational items, office supplies, computers, desks, things like that. And of course, it can be and probably will be debated on exactly how the ownership of that is set up. But we were told at the last meeting that it was, that, that office equipment and things like that, which are generally low-cost items. You'd have some computers and things and stuff in there, but they don't own like a truck or something like that, right? That was listed as $250,000 two weeks ago. And now we can, we were just told we could buy it for $400,000. But these are low-cost things and it's like gift shop items and, and stuff like that. There's no way it's anywhere close to $400,000. And things like computers and office furniture and stuff like that, that are larger purchases that they would have within that category, they're large expense items within that category. Those things depreciate. And so, you know, unless the computer's brand new, it's probably worth a few hundred dollars at most. And the same with the desk, you know, they bought a, let's say they bought a $1,000 desk. Well, if the desk is eight years old or 10 years old, it's probably depreciated off, right? And it's not really worth that kind of money. And so these are fiscal management issues and so it concerns me to, to hear this. And then the other thing is when you talk about being so solidly dedicated to the mission and then that's your sole purpose, is you're, you're dedicated to this mission. But then you talk about if this happens, that you're going to charge the city for the stuff. Because who cares about the museums continuing operation? We'll direct our staff to help us move things so they can operate stuff on a day-to-day basis. Sounded like that was what the plan was. And we'll charge you $400,000? That doesn't really sound like dedicated to the mission to me. That sounds like dedicated to our board of directors. And the savings that keep getting pushed around that like, this can operate more affordably if we do the private-public partnership, that might be theoretically true. You know, and I think there's different ways to look at the numbers, but again, it's on what you choose to prioritize for spending. But you have to keep in mind that any of those savings that happen would be unpaid wages and benefits and deferred maintenance. That, that's how you get to the savings, is you just pay people less or you defer maintenance on things. So, you know, I really have some concerns about a lot of this and I, we've been working on this for over a year and I'd, I'd really like to move forward. Somebody talked about, you know, you're not always happy with what your parents told you. And that is absolutely true and I don't want to have this be a therapy thing. I definitely had issues with my parents. But what we're doing is, what we're supposed to be doing is, we're the parents here. We're the city. We own these assets, you know, and, and we're supposed to be doing what's best for the museums. That's what people are saying and that's, that's what we're doing here. We have somebody that didn't take, take care of their stuff and we're going to take care of it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Finacy.
So if the city takes over the day-to-day management of the museums, there's really been three main positives that have been advertised or touted, or whatever you want to say. The first one is be able to pay the staffs a higher wage. Second one is be able to offer health insurance as a benefit for any full-time staff. And then third, it hasn't really gotten brought up here today, but in some of the, some of the past meetings, you had just to bring a new vision into the museums, a new perspective and kind of revitalize the museums as we know it. And of course, if the city takes over management, one, the first two will certainly happen. The current staff will see a pay increase and then all full-time staff will have the opportunity to get city health insurance. But I don't see how this moves us to the new vision for museums. This would fall into the Parks and Rec Department, under Director, under Director Maruska, who is highly capable and brings past museum experience with her, but it would only be a small portion of her job duties. Now, if she was to devote her full-time efforts to this position, I have full confidence that she'd be able to bring a new vision to the museums. But we hired her for her vision and ability to competently run our Parks, Recs, and Foresty Department, and we still need her for that. Because this would just be a small fraction of her daily responsibility. I don't see how moving the museums, I, I don't see how this move would bring our museums to the next level and when we don't have somebody devoted full-time to that bold new vision. Alternatively, with an increased stipend, Superior Public Museums could pay their staff that higher wage. They could offer the health insurance to any full-time employee and they could move forward with their search of an executive director that then could take the museums to the next level. But Superior Public Museums was asked to pause that executive director search over 12 months ago by this administration. We have the opportunity to accomplish object, those three objectives, higher, higher wages, benefits, and a, a new vision without adding more responsibility to our current city employees. And now, while most of this conversation, both at the city council and the committee levels, has resolved around, or has, has revolved around really, should it be SPM or should it be the city managing the museums? I think we're missing the broader conversation. And while we've needed to have those conversations, you know, which one will it be up to this point? I think the broader conversation that's being missed is if we should grow our local government more and add museum management as a facet of the services we provide, or if we should allow the private sector to continue to take on that responsibility. Because over the last few years, our city revenue stream has largely remained the same. But at the same time, we continue to expand the services our local government offers. So we continue to expand the local government to do more with the same amount of money we have coming in. Now, some of that initial growth has been funded by grants and COVID relief funds, but it doesn't offset the future ongoing cost to maintain those recently expanded services. If you look at just the last couple of years, we purchased the Carnegie Library. It sits vacant with a new roof. We acquired the Princess Theater, hired a consultant to develop a plan to turn that into an arts venue. It sits vacant with a new roof. We took tourism promotion away from the outside entity and brought that in-house. And at the last meeting, Counselor Grasky highlighted the road bumps encountered along the way with that. We've gotten into the broadband business and admittedly, it's probably too early to tell if, if that's going to be a success or not. We're currently in the landfill business and we can't exit that fast enough. All the while, we have a privately managed golf course that's thriving. We have a privately managed marina that's thriving. And we could continue to have a thriving privately managed museums operation that is able to, with more support from the city, provide higher employee wages, health insurance, and hire a, a new executive director to provide a bold new vision for the three museum sites. So although this particular conversation has shifted to more of a, of an either-or, either SPM or the, the city, the reality is if we keep growing our city operations in general, while at the same time, working with the same income revenue, something has to give with the other city, the other services our residents rely on. We can't keep growing our government without it impacting other areas. So for me, when it comes down to allowing the private sector to manage our museums or our local government to take this on in-house, it's an easy choice and I choose private management.
Further discussion? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Thanks for everyone being here tonight and speaking. I really appreciate, as they're walking out here, I'll give a shout out to the young folks that chose to spoke tonight, too. Thank you for your time here tonight. I, I started this last night at HRC and Chair Sweeney correctly redirected me. So I'll ask, I'll ask here tonight, in, in your outline, and I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your transition plan, even though, you know, admittedly, you said it's still kind of a working document and, and policy. So I appreciate that we got something in writing to kind of review before this meeting. You mentioned in there a couple of times, capital improvements. We've heard it here tonight, the, the challenges with capital improvements. Do we have an idea of what type of capital improvements need to be done to our current museums?
Yes, we, there've been proposals, particularly from our former Parks and Rec Director of certain things that could be done there. We know the work that, that must be done, that would be underway. And beyond that, there's, there's a difference between necessary capital improvements, like if, if the roof is failing, you got to do that, versus are there things that you could invest in that might improve the experience of the revenue? So I, I think most people familiar with the museums would be able to provide you a list right away. But there've been proposals in previous budgets. Some have been funded, some haven't.
You mentioned the, like, second part of that was the improving the experience with this new, if, if this transition happens, what are some of the new experiences or what are some of those new capital improvements that you see happening?
Well, first, I would recommend that all 10 counselors suggest those and send them to me over the next couple of days for our priorities-based budgeting. Because those, that's, that's a collaborative effort. That's policy. And I, I certainly have some ideas that I would like to see, but I'm one voice in this. And I think some of the ideas, I think there could be meaningful improvements to the meteor especially. I, I do think that's our most significant museum. It has national significance. I've been approached multiple times by the State Historical Society, expressing an interest in, they, they don't have a maritime museum of that caliber or anything that can focus on it, and nothing on Lake Superior. You know, it's a very significant year in shipping history and we're finding more and more shipwrecks that people would like to explore. That would be one of my personal goals, I think, that's got to make its way through the process. But my magic wand idea, a total overhaul of the meteor, make it a pro shop for shipwreck diving and, and tell the story of all of Lake Superior's shipwrecks. I think Fairlawn is a very productive event space and that produces revenue. So I think for years, there's been some conversation about using some of that back lawn area to expand the, at a gazebo to create a pavilion, to improve the event space for it. Again, a personal magic wand idea. I would love to restore the greenhouse someday. The, we're doing quite a bit of work in gardening around the city and I think that'd be exciting. Those are just some immediate ideas, but I'm also very compelled, I, I'm embarrassed to say that I only learned, I think, last year that we are the headquarters of the State Firefighting Museum. And that's, that's not a forgivable mistake, but it is a correctable one and I think that deserves some significant investment.
Thank you for that. Also at HRC last night, and I know you had another event to attend, so we didn't maybe get to have as candid a discussion as I was hoping for. But can you explain, and it's on last night's meeting, but I'd, I'd like to have that conversation again here tonight. Can you explain, in here, you talk about a possible move to a, an executive director. Was it executive or?
Museum director, yes.
Yep, thank you. And and the current museum manager and how that transition or what those positions might look like, or the differences with what they are now and what they could be in the future?
I am persuaded that the the position that is currently called executive director should be filled. There should be a person with overarching authority to do the work of directly supervising the museums. I probably want, would not design it the same way it exists now. I would put a pretty significant, it does fundraising now, but I would put a pretty significant emphasis on fundraising, but also historical research and development and presentation. So that said, that is a, the reason I left that a very open question in this plan is because that's policy. And that that really belongs first consultation with the existing staff. Consultation, if if we move forward with this, consultation with the Parks and Rec Director about what what duties she would need to pass down, what duties the current museum manager would need to pass up, then what are missing altogether? And then and then that would involve the Human Resource Committee, which is the policymaking body for that. But I do believe the position should be filled.
Thank you for that. I asked this two weeks ago, and and maybe I'm, maybe I'm the only one that feels this way. But oftentimes, when I have that internal discussion with myself, am I the only one that feels this way? I feel like other people are as well. So I'm going to say it out loud to make sure that I'm not crazy, but I very well may be. When, and I'll ask it in the form of a question, when did this change from a contract negotiation to the city taking it over? Because in my mind, last year, a year ago, or over a year ago now, it was let's extend the MOU, let's work with SPM. We had a, like, no problem extending the MOU, kicking that can several times now. When did this really change?
I I can give a little bit of the history, but I want to be careful about speaking for the Finance Committee. They are here, they can speak for themselves. But the, you all heard me publicly float the idea, and and I was challenged for not constructing it as a proposal. I dropped it. I didn't, I decided not to do that. However, it it was expressed that the city could take it over. At first, it was an idea of if we did nothing, if we just expired the MOU and did nothing, the city would take it over by default. And so, but then I considered over time like, well, it's a possibility, it's something we could conceivably do. So I did bring it up with the Finance Committee. Ultimately, and this is where I want to be careful, because I, again, I don't want to speak for them. Over the course of their conversations about, they did put this out for proposals. They reviewed those proposals pretty extensively. They had discussions about them. They did not recommend choosing one. They they did not want to award a contract to either of the organizations that offered proposals according to the terms that were described in in those proposals. I I worked as a negotiator on their behalf, and that's why I tried to avoid any further recommendations at at that point. They, and so the the committee drifted towards a decision through several conversations. I won't weigh in on how they got there, but they were drifting towards a decision. I saw my role at that point as offering them options, which I did. And I continued, even as I saw the decision is largely made by the committee, while I still had time, I did go with their permission. I did meet with the museums to try and construct other off ramps, other opportunities. Ultimately, those proposals received, criticism might be a strong word, but they disagreed. And and they made the recommendation they made. The best answer I can give to your conversation is over the course of the last six months.
Okay, that makes sense, kind of how we got here. You mentioned that you just kind of dropped the idea to to submit your own proposal, to submit this city's proposal. What what made you kind of decide to back away from putting that proposal together?
Part of it, that that was a while ago now. Ultimately, this was a policy decision that the committee was making. And it no longer needed, I was not in a position to recommend that we should do this. So I, while I thought it could be a very good idea and that there were serious merits to it, once the committee began its work, I was no longer required to make a policy recommendation. They were capable of doing that. They're they're, this committee has been doing that work for a very long time. So I just, if they wanted my advice, I gave it. If they wanted my research, I gave it. As the decision started drifting towards the idea of city management, well, then I had to give much more direct advice on whether or not we could do it. And and to me, it it was, to be honest, I don't even see it as terribly complex. I articulated to them how we would go about it, what administrative changes would happen. But ultimately, the way I viewed it is the the staff are running these museums right now. It's a matter of, this appeared to be a fiscal matter, and it would require some administrative work over the next couple of months and some supervision. But ultimately, the biggest stress to me was the finances of it, and I think I was able to resolve that fairly quickly in that conversation.
I'm glad you mentioned the finance, because that's kind of where I was headed next. You know, I was a little shocked by the $400,000 number two, it seems, without any context of what that is. That kind of took me by surprise, and I kind of saw some of the same reaction from my fellow counselors up here. But, you know, right now, it seems financially doable. And, you know, I'm a little concerned that you were at first like, yeah, let's do it, hesitant on it, and now we're back in. You know, I'm a little concerned about what with that, because in the future, you know, I can't speak for anyone else up here, but I don't plan on doing this forever. I don't plan on sitting in this seat forever, and I doubt the citizens of Superior will have any 10 of us sitting in these seats forever either. And so those those priorities, although it's a priority now, and and Mr. Mayor, I applaud you for making this a priority to save our historic buildings in the city. You have done and demonstrated that you are passionate about that, and I applaud you for that. It's unlikely that that level of enthusiasm for our historic places in Superior will continue. We, you know, we heard from one commenter tonight that not not that long ago, about a decade ago, there was counselors up here that did not have that passion. What I think SPM does is gives us that passion and that consistent outside agency somewhat removed from political influence or budgetary decisions that that I think could benefit our city's historic places in the future. So I just kind of wanted to touch on that. The other thing that I heard tonight, and I, and I think it's maybe the most important part in this discussion, is the, you know, the capital improvements and the priority based budgeting. Right now, our museums are, it seems to be, at least what I'm hearing now, kind of a critical point of like, which direction are we going to go, publicly, publicly ran or, you know, this public private partnership? I worry that if we continue down this path of transitioning to our city taking this over, that it's going to get lost in the fold of other priorities. It's going to get lost in the other priorities that counselors have, both this council and in future years. I worry that it, as things change in our city, that it's not going to continue that 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 high level of priority that we've seen from this administration and this council. The other thing that I'm concerned about is something that Counselor Finacy brought up, and I brought this up a couple of weeks ago. You know, I spoke with our our firefighters' union just last week. I spoke with our Superior Fire or Superior Police Department Union earlier this spring. And and I'm sure it's not a shock for all of you to hear this, one of the things that they ask for is going to be more money. They want higher wages. Our fire department ranks at the lowest in the in the state or at their comparables for wages. I expect that we'll see a large ask, and I hope that we prioritize their wage increases. We are going to continue to look at broadband. We're going to continue to look at taking over the utility. We don't even have a figure on that. Again, I'm not opposed to any of these things. I'm just worried that the the museums are going to get lost in the fold, not just this year or the next couple of years with this administration and these counselors that are sit up here with me tonight, but that in the future, it won't have the same level of priority that if we have a dedicated outside agency running and managing this. So for those reasons, I'm I'm concerned about this. That I want to ask you one more question, and I can wait and let some of my colleagues speak here. But with these timelines that you set, they seem to be very ambitious, so I applaud you for, you know, shooting for the moon. And of course, they, you know, hopefully land amongst the stars here. Between June 17th and August 5th is when the transition plan is going to happen, right? So have we talked to SPM to make sure that these timelines with our employees, that the employees there and their board of directors, that these work for them?
I had a meeting with board members of SPM immediately before our last council meeting to articulate a little bit of the timeline. The the first, and then, of course, the rest of this is meant to answer those questions for employees. The, one of the things that I committed to is the day after the council agrees to acquire, not not the day we acquire. Then the day, so if the vote tonight were to recommend acquisition tomorrow or as soon as they could conceivably meet with me, I would meet with staff to to give them my plan and to answer their questions.
Okay.
The Parks and Rec Director would do the same.
Okay, so then, when we're looking to do this, so what if there's a worst case scenario? I try to think of that. And we have, we have the ability to extend the MOU still, even if we vote not tonight, not continue the MOU?
Yes, of course. The, that, yes. And not only that, but I feel reasonably sure that if I needed more time, where if there was something holding me up, I can't think of a legal reason. Of course, I would get legal advice on this, and I have time to do that. But if for some reason I could not pull this off, an example would be, let's say, the Human Resource Committee just decided to take three months to debate these job descriptions, taking it out of my hands. I believe that until the end of the year, as long as SPM agrees, we can continue to operate the MOU as it currently exists. And the reason I believe that is because we've done it before with other agreements that have expired or that we have not renewed. So we've had contracts expire while we were still negotiating their renewal, and and so we just kept paying the bills. The biggest question is, do we have the funds, which we do? We've already allocated the funds to administer the MOU. I believe that I can make the decision to keep it going if I or the administration needs more time. The council, of course, has that right as well.
Okay, so we, so I guess my point in asking that isn't that I think your timelines are off or that they're wrong in any way, because I think that it makes sense in what, at least what I can, you know, conceivably understand through what you wrote here. But like, I feel like the the timeline of taking over August 5th might be a little disruptive to the current format, the current museum operations, taking it over in August versus January 1st. So I guess I would prefer to wait a little bit longer. The other thing that I, that I, the reason why I think we should wait a little bit longer for this transition, if it's going to happen, is we have continued to kick the can, so to speak, with this MOU, not giving them enough time here. And maybe they see the writing on the wall and that they're just kind of ready to go. But I feel like we should just give them, give it a little bit more time. We can have some of these things together. We could probably get a museum director, executive director hired by then. We can probably get things ironed out a little bit smoother. We can have a bit more time to transition with our senior staff in the museums, understanding what's happening on a day to day basis. Yes, the staff are managing it already, and yes, the staff will be able to be capable of continuing to manage that. But job descriptions alone don't necessarily lend well to transitioning to a takeover of a company. Most of the time when there's some sort of takeover or a business transaction with a sale, it, you know, they they stay on for a year or or longer to kind of help that transition. So I guess if we're going in that direction, I'd like to see the transition play out a little bit longer than August 5th. But overall, I feel like, right now, with the information I have, that SPM is the best move forward, and so I'll be voting against the the transition.
And I should address the actual date at which acquisition formally takes place. I am at the pleasure of the council on that. If you can't, you can't do this tonight. But if if you were to vote to take them over tomorrow, or or say you did at the next council meeting, voted to take them over the next day, we'd make it work. It would just be bumpier. If if you want to push that back because you think it needs more time, that's fine, too. I'll I'll take as much time as given. The the point of putting this to councils, there's a lot of work that has to be done before the 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 handover formally occurs. And I need the council to tell me to do that. If, so I need to hear that we're doing it. I mean, conceivably, I could start, I could have started all this work months ago, and we did start a lot of it, everything I felt comfortable doing. But what, one example, hiring the employees. If there's a decision that we will be acquiring, that the city will operate the museums, then we will hire the employees before that date occurs, as soon as we are able to. So if the council feels more comfortable setting the acquisition date at the end of the year to give the committees more time to work on some of these policies, that's, I have no objection to that. That, the date in front of me is August 5th, August 6th, whatever that was. The, this plan is how to make that work. If it's December 31st, make that work, too.
Counselor Grasky?
I have a couple, their financials, because I want to treat this as I, I feel like we are kind of getting stumped on the financial side of it, which is great. I think that's the importance of what we do. Now, I'm going through, let's look at this, sorry, my eyes need to adjust, allergies, budget numbers, right? And I'm looking at the current management's total expenses. And like, I don't want to keep throwing numbers out there, so I don't know if this is a, if this is just kind of a wash on a question. But I don't know if the Finance Committee could just support that in 2024, the budget and the operating expenses for SPM was $352 and 992. Sorry, that's way out of the other side of the sphere here. But what I'm trying to get at is that if that's their expenses in this last year, and they're asking for another $150,000, that would make them more expensive than what the current plan we are seeing as the city would cost us. And I'm just, if you can help me with that, otherwise, this to me isn't, it seems like more of an expensive option as we go through the years. If it was, we were to be allocating that 150 as the additional ask, and maybe I'm reading this wrong.
I mean, that's, I I make that argument in this plan. The, they're significant, and we won't get this dollar for dollar, the operations are simply too different. But there, when you look at these numbers, the administrative capacity of the city is huge. It's a 300 member staff. It's it's a $35 million operation in the general fund alone. And so we have significant resources that simply are not available to a small nonprofit. That 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 economy of scale reduces the cost of operating the museums. And I I think I made an argument in here that compares what it costs on staff alone. Again, you cannot do this dollar for dollar because there are some things they can't provide. They cannot provide the city's health plan. They cannot provide access to the Wisconsin Retirement System. However, if I just go the actual cost of, because you see in here a document that shows our true out the door cost for staff, for staff fee and benefits, if if we acquire this, it does build in a museum director position. Little hard to read, you got to like do some addition and subtraction here. Our, it's an increased cost, oh, I I wrote that in here, actually. The increased, if we were to just transfer and say, hey, provide the wages and benefits that we would, that would be an increased transfer of $182,499 to them, for them to provide exactly what we are, what this plan proposed to provide. We are able to do this whole operation for an increased cost of $156,000. I don't know if this is the point you made, but to me, it does appear that the city can operate this more affordably than the nonprofit is currently operating it.
And that's where I'm trying to compute here, too, is that at the, if we add in the overall tourism hotel motel from the 30%, along with the, I guess, 155,000, I think we're reaching like 171, 80. If you're telling me that we're going to be also, if we were just to give an additional amount to fit the needs and wants that we're all hearing, so an additional 180, I'm just making this easy for me to add, that's $360,000, which is a $40,000 difference shy of what the initial amount of, like, the $406,000 that the, your plan is saying it will cost to run. Are you saying it's an additional 406,000?
No, no, the
Overall, is the 406,000. Overall, is the 406 number.
The, the reason, the 461 is a balance number between expenses and revenues, and I might have lost a little bit of what you're saying there at the end, so, so look, I'll just-
And I don't blame you.
Um, doing great, I just, it's a lot of numbers, but the, uh, I incorporated the revenues in here. So the current cost to the city is, you have that right, of 155,000 plus whatever is allocated from the hotel motel tax, which is a, is just a percentage, that comes to about, call it 175, I don't know. So that's what the city's currently paying towards the museums. However, the museums generate revenue. So I created this as not an enterprise fund, because it's probably never going to balance, but it's, it's a segregated fund. So it draws revenue in, it, it has an expense, yes, of 461,240, and so the revenue to make in the black has to be equal to that. It has significant revenue, in order to make it balance, I just transferred more money from the general fund, 156,000, that's, that's what that says, that's how I made it balance. It will cost us more than it's currently costing us. The way the, I, I hope I don't sound too critical saying this, the way the nonprofit makes a balance is by paying staff less, that they have far lower staffing expenses than the city would have. I do have an opinion on that, I obviously have a very strong opinion on that, but from a purely administrative standpoint, the city does not have much choice in what we pay our staff. We have policy, you, you can change that policy, of course, but, but we have set policy, I have set policy that you have given me, I pay the staff what you've told me to pay them, and if these people are doing these duties, I have to pay them that. And i- if the museums were to pay them that, what, what this seems to show, as I work it out, is that we'd have to give them more money than it would cost if we just did it ourselves.
Okay, and maybe my whole point here is to show that 10, 11, a year in finance was a good amount of time to vet this, that's just my opinion at this moment, thank you.
Okay, uh, further discussion, particularly from anybody that hasn't spoken. Councilor Sweeney.
When this finance committee looked at this, the mayor came to us and said, we have some proposals, we want you to, to take a look at this, we've had MOUs for years, it was time to get into a longer-term arrangement. And so, three of us did it.
I'm sorry, councilor, could I have silence from the, from the audience, please?
I'm sorry?
I, I just need the audience to be, to be silent, I can't have the audience speaking while you're speaking. Please continue.
Sure, thank you. And so, when we took the charge to, to look at these proposals, we did that. And as nine months, we looked at that, and it became clearer and clearer to me, and it was a unanimous vote, that neither proposals for the long term were going to do the job for us. Some of them were in their control, they could have controlled them, they didn't. Others were out of their control, some of the very things we alluded to tonight, not in their control. There's, there's economy of scale, and you just can't fight that, and, but there are many things they could have done that they didn't do. And so, as we moved along, we finally decided that neither proposal would, for the long term, would be adequate. We needed, if we can't be in whatever we do, whether it be golf course, or Marina, or anything else, if we can't be in the top three in the market, we oughtn't to get into it, okay? How are we going to, and we didn't see ourselves beginning in the top three of museums in whatever the geographic area is. Like, like I say, if we're going to be 10th place in the, we could easily be 10th place in museums, but we, that's not our objective, our objective is always to be in the top three, no matter what we do. And we didn't see any possibility currently what we were doing. Like I said, some was out of their control, some was in their control. The mayor did not direct us to go one way or the other, but it came obvious to us that, that the city probably at this time ought to take a look at that, and ought to run that. That's how we came to that. We didn't come in with a preconceived idea, my two other members, and we had long discussions, we talked about, we actually sometimes went into minutia, and when you get arguing and discussing and debating for nine months, you, you go over the same road. You may have missed a bump or two, but you don't miss, you're going over the same bumps, okay? And so, we're very confident in our decision, I stand behind our decision, and I think we made the right one. Thank you.
For, Councilor Herrick.
Yeah, again, I repeated, well, I said this last, our last council meeting, again, I do have great gratitude for the Superior Public Museums, what they're doing now, they did a lot of work. At the same time, though, I feel that we have the opportunity to do a little more, get the museums up to where they should be as far as the long-term goals of keeping them basically maintenance up to, up to date, and we're talking about big maintenance items, like was mentioned earlier. Again, I would like to see, whatever the decision is tonight, I would like to see the people that are, have this passion, to continue to remain and doing the things that you're doing, I don't think that has to change. It's just that right now, you know, we're taking on more responsibility, but those more responsibilities are going to get us better people, going to get us better museums, and who knows, maybe someday down the road, who, you know, it could be turned over again to another nonprofit, but for now, we need to make these, these big improvements. Again, we can have friends of Superior Museums, like was mentioned earlier, we have the friends of the library, we have the friends of Lake Spire Estuaries, we have, and all these people are doing good things for these organizations, because they have a passion, and I see that passion in you, and I hope, you know, that one changed the things that you're doing, that you'll continue to carry on that passion. One of the other things too, is that I want to mention, is that, that, you know, of course we know about the Whaleback, that does need a lot of work, and it's true, it's the last one in the whole world, the other one, there is one in Duluth, but it's way under, okay? So this is the last one that people can physically go to. So we need to keep up these iconic, one-of-a-kind museums. And as far as the fire, fire museum goes, carry on that passion, we can keep that fire museum going, but here you have the opportunity to take care of a lot of major, large expenses. Yeah, it's maybe a little more cost to, to us here, you know, as taxpayers, but we get products we can be proud of, for there's a lot of history in these things, there's a lot of history, as you well know, in the Fairlon, there's a lot of history in the Whaleback, there's a lot of history in that old fire museum out there, and, and I did know for years that that was a, the state's headquarters for, for, for being a museum, for the police and fire. So yeah, keep those passions going, whatever the decision is tonight, don't give up on your passions. The, the world right now, you know, I'm, I'm not going to go on too much longer, because it's getting late, but the, but the world right now needs people with more passion to get things done in a community. And so again, I thank you for all that you do, that's all I have.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Fennessy.
Although, although we, some of us might disagree tonight, I think the one thing that we can all agree on is that we want to take care of the current employees and staff, and, and then moving forward, we want to provide the best museum experience for superior residents and tourists alike, and I think where the disagreement comes is, you know, what, what path gets us there the fastest. And Mayor, at the beginning of the, of this debate, when you, when you kind of introduced this, you made it, made it clear that this isn't necessarily your, like, your, your plan, your, your, your proposal, and, but rather a directive from, from finance, and in everything leading up to this point, I wa-, I found that to be true. You know, in the, in, in the meetings, the interaction in the meetings, the, the lack of you putting forward a, a proposal as one of the options, even last meeting, the lack of, you know, not having a concrete plan, I've, I've found that to be true, that this, I don't think this is, you know, something that you've put a lot of, like, effort into pushing. And so, if I, you certainly don't have to answer, but if I, if I could ask, if the city taking over the operations wasn't necessarily your plan, something that you were, you were going to push, would you, would you mind sharing if you have a different plan for, or like a desired outcome, if, if this wasn't something, or do you, do you think that this would be the best move forward for, for the best museum experience moving forward?
I think I actually have different answers to those questions, because there are other options, I, I've suggested several. The, I had goals at the beginning of the process, those goals were developed by feedback I heard from members of this council and members of the public, and those goals were, one of the things that's been left out of a lot of this conversation is increased oversight from, directly from the city, the ability of the city council to directly administer its museums, because the, there is a threat, that I think was well articulated, that I worry about, of, of future mayors and councils may not be as supportive of history, historic preservation and museums that I am and that this council is. Unfortunately, so where you go, public decides who their mayor and council is, full stop, and count on me being at the podium if they're gonna, i- i- if they're going to try and defund history, but, but the public decides that, and I think the public should have the, the largest possible voice in oversight, so that was one of my goals, improving the museums, investing more money in them was one of my goals, and, and changes in policy, which is better accomplished with oversight. I, I proposed several paths to that. In terms of where, where I'm at tonight, as much as I have tried to stay neutral so that I could do good administrative work for the council in, in this question, obviously, I have put a significant amount of work in this, and I have become persuaded, you know, when it, when I am answering the question, can the city effectively operate these museums, it required of me and my staff to put a significant amount of work in not only answering that question, yes, because if you say to do it, we have to do it, we also have to do it as effectively as we possibly can. And so I've, I've put, I think, a bun-, a, a lot of work into making sure that if this vote is a yes tonight, that immediately tomorrow, we're working very hard on making this extremely successful, and I've become persuaded that it would be. So mostly, the part that I most, the most persuasive element of this, maybe the second most, the most persuasive element to me is, I, I personally will have a huge amount of fun working on museums. I, you, you all know I deeply enjoy the study of history, it was my major in college, I will enjoy doing this work, I will enjoy working with the people that are there, I, I would love to have them as colleagues, and I, I would love to continue working with the members of S-, Superior Public Museums who have demonstrated their passion for these, for these sites. But, but the true, administratively, the most important thing, I, I want to pay these staff more, I think they're doing an outstanding job, we have worked very hard to be one of the best-paying employers in the Twin Ports, I think the work that they do is valuable, and I think it should be rewarded, and I think we should take care of them for their whole career, and well afterwards, and I think that's a huge opportunity, and it, it's gotten me excited. That's as far as I'll go, rather than give you a full recommendation to say you should vote one way or another, I can tell you if you voted yes, I would, it, it makes me excited. Is there further discussion? Councilor Ludwig.
Yeah, I, I made myself some notes here when I was debating how my vote would go, and I think to me, the main thing is improve salary and benefits for our employees. You know, in my working career, I had jobs which included decent salaries and benefits, including health, life insurance, and, you know, just as importantly, retirement benefits, which now afford me to live a comfortable retirement, and I think I would feel, personally feel like a hypocrite if I didn't vote to afford the museum employees the same opportunity. And while, you know, I, I applaud Superior Public Museums for, you know, asking for additional money for their employees for health insurance, there still is, you know, the other things that the city can affor-, can afford, life insurance, and more importantly, WRS retirement. And, you know, better wages and benefits will afford our city to hire and retain more knowledgeable employees with backgrounds on how to market, curate, and operate our museums. Also, better oversight from the city will afford a shared over, shared oversight and resources across our departments, public works, buildings and grounds, parks and rec. But also, in, in addition to this, I think we, we also need a specific committee, board, or commission, who will put the needs of the museums front and center, and will advocate for those needs, you know, just like we have the Golf Course Committee, Wisconsin Point Committee, Public Parks and Rec Commission, and the Urban Forestry Tree Board, who all, who advocate for all these specialties, so whether it's a new committee that create or, we create, or I hope the Superior Public Museums will continue to be that, you know, that advisory committee, I, I think it's a win-win situation if, if the city takes over control, and, you know, and I respect the finance committee taking nine months to, to go over the pros and cons, and the finance committee make it, made their recommendation, and so I'm going to go along with the finance committee's recommendation.
Councilor, that reminds me, you, you brought up a point that was asked of me in private about the, the committee structure that will oversee this, I, I put this under the Parks and Rec Commission, because the Parks, Rec and Forestry Director is, it would be overseeing it from day one, but that is an open-ended policy question that would be up to the council, and I imagine, it's, if you really squint, you can see it at the far end, a new museum director would make a recommendation for an ordinance, or some policy for how this would be administered. So it is possible that the Parks and Rec and Forestry Commission is not likely its final home. I, I think that's a council decision where it should go, but a good example, and I think probably one of my recommendations would be the Historic Preservation Commission, which is already discussing expanding its membership, so not only is it already populated with people that would be, uh, good candidates to oversee this, they'd be making room for some of the people that have been overseeing the museums if they were willing to serve. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're going to proceed by roll call, this is Councilor Anderson's first roll call vote from virtual presence, so Councilor Anderson, can you still hear us?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead and leave your mic on until we get to your vote, and then, then you can go ahead and mute again. Uh, okay, the question is whether to, let me read it exactly, the question is whether to accept the recommendation of the finance committee, which recommends that the city of Superior assumes full operations of Fairlon Mansion and Museum, the Old Firehouse and Police Museum, and the Whaleback Ship Museum, yes, authorizes city operation of the museums on August 6th, no, I don't know what it does, no, does not. We will proceed by roll call.
We'll start with Councilor Elm.
Yes.
Ludwig.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Graski.
Yes.
Ladine.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moffett.
Yes.
Sweeney.
Yes.
Fennessy.
No.
I have a vote of eight in favor, two against, and the motion carries. Thank you, councilors. It is, it's 9:20 PM, it's possible we can move quickly through the rest of the agenda, but I should ask if anybody needs a recess.
I would suggest we have a five-minute recess.
Uh, is there objection to a five-minute recess? We will reconvene at 9:25 PM. We are in recess.
I was in Providence last week for Congress for New Urbanism, we had our thirteen-year-olds. We let our thirteen-year-olds wander around downtown Providence, we're like, this is incredibly safe, and there's people everywhere, and there's police officers. But there were so many people around that we're just like, we felt totally comfortable, we're like, here's a hotel key, you got your phone. We have interns in our therapy office, so we're able to offer free therapy for people because that interns can keep their hours in. So we just put a sign out sometimes in the Skyway, like, come on in, well, like, you can feel good, you hooked up with someone, you know? And it's great that we are able to do that, but we have definitely had some real characters come in, and we're just like, this might be on this beyond the scope of what we can do in an hour, but we're happy to get you started. We're in the Minnesota National Bank Building, the one that's connected to Wells Fargo. And then we still, we combined both our offices and moved in there, and then we ran out of offices again, and so we still have some people over in the Stanley Center Building above that Thomas State Store, so we have two offices.
On the left side.
One minute warning. It is nine twenty-five P M, the council will come back to order, and I will ask the clerk to proceed with new business.
Item ten point one, I'm recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses pending department approvals.
Motion is by Counsel Herrick, second by Counsel Ladine, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item ten point two, I'm recommending approval of an amend the premise for Birds Bar located at fifty-eight oh one Tower Avenue for the events Birds Bass South End South End Days on July eighteenth and nineteenth, pending fire department approval.
Motion is by Counsel Ladine, second by Counsel Johnson, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Ten point three, I'm recommending approval of an amend the premise for East End Tavern located at twenty-one fourteen East Fifth Street for the event East End Days on August sixteenth, pending fire department approval.
Motion is by Counsel Fennessey, second by Counsel Sweeney, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Ten point four, I'm recommending conditional approval of an original Class B liquor and Class B beer license application for the Superior Flame LLC doing business Superior Flame located at sixteen twelve Tower Avenue effective June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, for the current license period through June thirtieth, pending surrender of current premise license.
Motion is by Counsel Grasky, second by Counsel Elm, is there discussion? Counsel Fennessey.
Can you just explain what that last bit means, pending surrender of current?
So anytime someone decides to buy one of our current license premise, I will not give over the license during a current license period until the current license holder gives it back. So let's say, I'm guessing this is a sale of one business owner to another, if that sale falls through, uh, you'll see on the renewal list that both of these business owners have applied for a July first renewal. And so I've kind of, you know, I've worked and talked with both of them about, uh, if the sale falls through, the current license holder still needs to be able to renew July first, so they're kind of, it's kind of, we're in a weird spot where we're this license period is only for two weeks, and they're also seeking a renewal because of the timeframe.
Okay, no, I appreciate the explanation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Ten point five, I'm recommending approval of the final report of renewing retail alcohol beverage licensing.
Motion is by Counsel Herrick, second by Counsel Fennessey, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say, those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point six, I'm recommending approval of the final report of renewing retail cigarette, tobacco, and vape product licensing.
Motion is by Counsel Fennessey, second by Counsel Moffett, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item ten point seven, Public Works Jan- Director Janico is recommending approval of an ordinance amending city code chapter one twelve, traffic code schedule J, accessible parking zones to add accessible parking signage at six fifteen North Twenty-second Street on one side.
Motion is by Counsel Ludwig, second by Counsel Ladine, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say, those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point eight, uh, Public Works Director Janico is recommending approval of an ordinance amending city code chapter one twelve, traffic code, schedule J, accessible parking zones to add accessible parking sign, do not block sidewalk sidewalk at six fifteen North Twenty-second Street.
Motion is by Counsel Johnson, second by Counsel Moffett, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And ten point nine, Public Works Director Janico is recommending approval of an ordinance amending city code chapter one twelve, traffic code, schedule J, accessible parking zones to add accessible parking sign, do not block sidewalk at nineteen oh eight Wisconsin Avenue.
Motion is by Counsel Herrick, second by Counsel Johnson, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, is there any further business from the council? Hearing none, we are adjourned.